Yeah, she said what else?
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, states, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Abby, are you there?
I'm here, but I'm getting a ton of requests from people saying that there's no link. They cannot see this live.
It's being broadcast, I believe, on Facebook Live. It's also on the public access television channel.
I'm on the Ellsworth High School page right now.
It's been live for 30 seconds.
And it's not there.
It's on. It's on.
Try refreshing it, Abby.
Try refreshing it, Abby.
Rob can see it live. Got it?
Abby, have you been able to access it yet?
Did we lose her?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Item C, adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, Mrs. Thomas. For the board's consideration, would like to recommend that the board adjust item J, new business, as follows. Move item J seven, which is discussion and consideration of return to school framework, to become J one, and renumber the remaining items. And add discussion and consideration of authorization to submit Libra Foundation, excuse me, foundation grant to item J eight. So moved.
Seconded.
Was that, Jen, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion? All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Are you over? Oh, thank you. I go. Approval of the minutes of the July 14th, 2020 school year meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone item J five, which would then be discussion and consideration of request to paint crosswalks to our October meeting.
So, Jen, is this make sure I got it right? Postpone J five to the October meeting?
If I understand that that's how it will now be numbered, the discussion and consideration of request to paint crosswalks as J five. Yes.
So not to consider it tonight, but to move it to the October meeting?
Correct.
Is there a second?
That was my motion.
The motion failed to lack of a second.
Hello?
Yes.
I second that. I'm sorry, guys.
Okay.
My feed is about 25 seconds behind us. You know, and I'm having a very hard time hearing you guys.
I think we're all gonna have to be rate.
Trying to get captains to come back up on this, but I second that motion.
Okay.
Thank you, Abby. We will speak louder.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor of tabling it?
Postponing it, not tabling it.
Postponing it, I'm sorry. Postponing it? Abby?
Yes.
Do you want to postpone it?
Yes.
All those voting no? Failed with three O motion. Three O vote, I'm sorry.
Three two.
Three two.
Three two.
Item D, approval of minutes for July 14th, 2020, school board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item E, correspondence and communications.
Correspondence that I have received would be taken up under our discussion item J one.
Okay. Item F, public participation. For this meeting, you may send emails, questions to Paul Marcosian at P Marcosian at Ellsworth schools.org. I want to remind everyone that you need to identify yourselves. You need to keep the questions and comments brief because we know that we're going to have a whole lot. Speakers are not permitted to share gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. No complaints or allegations will be allowed at a school board meeting concerning a person employed by the school department or any particular students. And the board discourages duplication or repetition of comments to the board. Thank you. And that is P Marcosian at Ellsworth schools.org. Okay. Item G, administrator board reports. And we're going to forego that because that's going to all be part of J one. Item H, committee reports.
The curriculum committee has not met.
No. Item J, we have no old biz, oh, excuse me, I, we have no old business. Item J, discussion and consideration of return to school framework.
Can I just mention something, Brenda? We might want to make a comment. I know that we have in the past that those Facebook, that Facebook's not monitored. So the comments coming in sometimes to Paul, those are not monitored. Just email Paul.
Okay. Facebook is not monitored, so if you have a question, it has to come through the school mail to P Marcosian because no one is really monitoring Facebook. And I know a lot of people ask questions here. They don't get answered. They get frustrated because it's the wrong place to send the questions. So, thank you.
And usually, one or more people will hopefully post my email address in the Facebook comments. So if you didn't get a chance to write it down and get the spelling of my name, you'll be able to find someone there who will help you with that.
Good evening, everybody. Appreciate this opportunity to speak to the board and our community members to present the planning collaborative group's presentation and recommendation for a start to the school year for 2020-21. Before I start in the formal part of the presentation, I thought it'd be very important that I'd be able to share some personal thoughts for our students, staff, and our families. As we all know, since the emergence of the COVID-19 virus in late February, early March, we've had a very challenging and difficult spring and summer, and that includes all of us. With the emergence of the virus, many of us experienced significant changes in our lives and new normals in our lives, both personal and professional. Amongst those changes were stresses, anxieties, challenges, and many unknowns. And those items have no timetable for when they're going to end. But I'm very proud to say that I'm proud of our community's efforts in their response to the COVID-19 virus and taking seriously the precautions and recommendations intended to keep ourselves, our families, and our community members safe. It's no accident that the low number of reported cases in Hancock County is a direct result of the seriousness with which our community took these precautions. Would also add that I think it's very important that we continue to take proper precautions moving forward. Would also like to express my deepest appreciation to the many students, staff members, parents, community members who reached out and contacted me personally over the last several months. Your feedback, your questions, your concerns, and your input are extremely critical to the process. Please know that I have heard you, and I know our board members have heard you as well. Even though every question may not be answered with the response that people are looking for, every idea may not find its way into the final framework, it's highly critical that people are involved, and the Ellsworth community is definitely involved. So thank you very much. As you all know, we still have a difficult task ahead, not just this evening, in arriving at a final model for the beginning of school, but moving forward as we continue to fight this dangerous virus. But I'm a firm believer that the strength of community, collaboration, cooperation, and unity will guide us through this difficult time. Although we may not be able to control the wind, we can certainly adjust the sails as we move forward. Moving forward as we continue to fight this dangerous virus, I'm a firm believer that the strength of community.
Hey, Dan. I did get one comment that someone's having a little bit trouble hearing you, so maybe if you move the microphone a little bit closer. It's difficult with the, I know the mask may.
Is that better?
We'll find out.
For the purposes of the formal presentation this evening, I'm gonna talk briefly about the Department of Education's framework and requirements, talk about the hybrid module structure that is the format of the presentation this evening, give our administrators who are here personally and also in attendance at the meeting by phone over Zoom to talk about in-person and remote structures in place in our schools and other areas related to our schools. We'll conclude with a committee recommendation to the board and then certainly be available to ask, excuse me, to answer any questions. So, June 2020, it seems so long ago, but then again, it seems like it's gone by very quickly. I'm sure for many of you, as the days have gone by, one day moves into the next, one hour moves into the next, and sometimes we forget what day it is. But back in June of 2020, when we were completing the school year, we left the school year talking to the community and talking to you as a board about our intended planning for the fall. We were starting that process, and we maintained a healthy optimism that we'd be able to fully return to school with all students and staff in September of 2020. Over the course of the summer, we've maintained that optimism because that's what all of us want. There's not anybody in this room, not anybody in this community, that does not want to see a full return to school for all of our students under pre-COVID-19 conditions. Let's be honest, that's what we all want to see. However, the COVID-19 virus, the guidelines that we've received to inform our planning process, and the requirements that go along with those guidelines will ultimately dictate how school will begin in our community. I'd like to express sincere thanks to the members of the planning group, the working subgroups, all the staff members who were participating in the process, and to all of you who reached out with questions, concerns, and suggestions, filled out surveys that we asked you to fill out, provided us with great feedback and great comments. All of that information has been reviewed, discussed, considered, and while it may not find its way into the final proposed structure for this evening, you have been heard, and that's a healthy part of the process. So, some of this information that I'm presenting right now, we have talked about at length in previous meetings. We have also provided this information in communication to staff members and to our community. But just to review, sources of guidance and requirements to guide the planning process. Main Department of Education's Framework for Returning to Classroom Instruction, which can be found on the Department of Education's website. Included in that are health and safety requirements prepared for the Department of Ed in conjunction with the Department of Health and Human Services, main centers for disease control and prevention. The framework document itself was first issued on June 11th, and that started to inform the process at that time. It has been revised several times over the course of the summer, with the most recent revision being July 31st. Along that timeline, we continue to receive updates on guidance, sometimes formally, sometimes in discussions of what may be sent forth, which has created frustration in the planning process. But we've incorporated everything that has been updated into the plans, and I want to remind people that even with the recommendation here this evening, that as guidance and requirements continue to change, sometimes on a daily basis, what the board approves here tonight could change tomorrow or several days in the future. We certainly hope that is not the case, but I think we all need to be prepared that that could happen. So, in determining an instructional model to begin the school year with, within the guidance, there are two major components. One is the green, yellow, red risk designation system put forth by the Department of Education, DHHS, and CDC, and the accompanying health and safety requirements. As part of the requirements in the guidance, planning group was determined, excuse me, required to come up with three modes of instruction. One is a mode whereby all students return to in-person instruction, which again is what we would all like to see. Second one is a hybrid model, which is a combination of in-person instruction and learning and remote instruction and learning. And the third model would be a full remote instructional model for all students. The reason that we had to plan for all three of those is that we do not know what the future holds with regard to the virus and how it's going to react. We need to be prepared for any eventuality. What's also important to mention is that the mode of instruction that forms the basis of this proposal and presentation is based on a combination of the color-coded risk designation and the health and safety requirements. Now, members of the board, we have talked about this, and you've seen this in communications. I can go through some of those requirements and designations if you'd like. You know, I think it's something that we have put out there very clearly to you as a board member, to our administrators, to our families, but I can review it if you'd like. If not, I will continue.
Aye.
Just a little more depth on the instructional models that are part of the requirements. First is in-person instruction. An in-person instruction for all students is only possible if health and safety requirements, along with the color-coded designation, support permitting all of our students to return to school. At this point in time, the combination of those two does not permit all of our students to return to school safety. And again, bottom line for us is, first and foremost priority is the health and safety of all of the Ellsworth School Department family. When you think of our staff, you think of our students, you think of our community, we're talking about a family. Health and safety of our family is of critical importance. When we are able to return to in-person instruction for all students, and we all hope it's sooner rather than later, the model that we have would retain a couple of things. One would be the pre-screening symptom checklist. A second thing would be the continued emphasis on hand washing and cough hygiene. And the third piece would be requirements for returning to school after being ill. And when you look at those requirements that are there, that makes sense. Hybrid instructional model will be implemented in the event that the hybrid model is necessary based upon the combination of the health and safety requirements and the color-coded risk designation. And in Ellsworth, if the hybrid by choice model could not be accommodated in compliance with those requirements. And just as a reminder to the board and to our community, the most recent survey that we did was intended to determine if we could enter into a hybrid instructional model that would honor choice for all families. And as we talked about in the most two recent workshops, we determined that that cannot happen, but that was the direction that we had hoped to go. The most recent survey that we did was a. The third model that we're required to have is remote instruction for all. And again, remote instruction for all would be implemented by directive of state government and the DOE, or if the risk categorization for Hancock County becomes red. And I just want to state that none of us, none of us at all, would like to see a full return to remote instruction. So, let me focus on the hybrid instructional model. The model being presented here this evening for your consideration is a hybrid based upon an alternative schedule. And it's an alternative schedule because we could not honor the choice for every family. Key to that model would be that students and families who have chosen full remote instruction will have that choice honored. It's also important to know that selection of a remote model to start the year is a commitment to the remote model for a full ranking period in the school where the student attends. So at EEMS, that's for a trimester. At EHS and HCTC, that's for a quarter. The students who are opting for the hybrid model, combination of in-person and remote learning, will be grouped into two groups, a maroon group and a gray group, who will alternate between the in-person and remote instruction following a prescribed schedule, which we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. One of the key pieces to know here is that when these groups are devised, students in the same household will be placed in the same group to help our families with planning. So that people will understand clearly, when these groups are divided up, can look at the following schedule. The maroon group shows up on the left-hand side. On Monday, the maroon students would be in-person at their school. Tuesday, they would be part of a remote program. Wednesday, they would be in-person. Thursday, they would be part of a remote program. On Friday, they would be in-person one week and remote the next week. The gray group would be the exact opposite. On Mondays and Wednesdays, they would be in the remote portion of the program. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, they would be in the in-person portion of the program. And on Fridays, remote one week and in-person the next. Now, US board members and members of our community may say, those don't sound exactly the same as the models that we talked about last week. When our planning group met last Wednesday in a five-hour marathon session, we started by comparing the pros and cons of the two models that were presented last week. And as we moved through that, it occurred to us that there were some challenges in each of the models, and an amended model came forth for discussion. Here are some of the reasons that we considered an amended model. One was that the initial model where we had an alternating day schedule whereby we had two groups alternating in-person, remote, in-person, remote, regardless of the day or week, we did not have scheduling consistency for our families. Another piece that we looked at, the schedule that had two groups and a full remote day on Monday, as we reviewed that model, we looked at the amount of instruction and learning that would be reduced. When you look at the number of Mondays in the school year, separating out the holidays, you're talking 29 Mondays. The committee could not support having 29 Mondays where instruction and learning were not the primary focus. When we talked last week, we talked about Monday being a remote-only day. You'll notice in the schedule that I just put up, Friday is the day that is going to be a day where students are either in-person or remote, alternating by week. The reason we changed from Monday to Friday was because Fridays are an existing professional learning community day in our school system, where students have always been released early and staff have participated in staff activities. If we had gone with Monday as the day, the PLCs would not have continued this year. So the committee reached consensus that having that day on a Friday would take advantage of PLC days for planning for our staff. One of the things that we talked at length about was ensuring that our teachers have adequate planning and preparation time. Under the model that had a full remote day for all students, there were hours included in there for teacher planning and preparation time. So moving away from that, we needed to look at how we can ensure that teachers have that time. So what we are doing is this. We're using the coronavirus relief funds to provide compensated summertime for teachers to plan and participate in professional development, up to 10 hours for each teacher this week and the week of August 24th. For those of you who are asking, what about next week? Next week was the week what we have, the two days from last June, that we decided to reserve and move into the months of August specifically for teacher planning and preparation. Above and beyond the 10 hours this week, the 10 hours the week after, we're going to use those funds to provide four hours per week for each teacher each week through December 30th, when those funds are no longer eligible for expenditure. Additionally, we're looking at the Friday dismissal time for PLCs, which has typically been between 1:15 and 1:30, to see if we can dismiss students a little bit earlier to leverage additional planning time for our staff. Again, that's critical to the process. Some other key points of the model that we're presenting this evening. As opposed to the model that had Monday being a remote learning day for all students, Friday is going to be an in-person learning day. As the schedule I demonstrated a few minutes ago showed you, the maroon group would be in-person one Friday, the gray group would be in-person on the following Friday. What this means is, however, instead of all students being remote on one day, each group of students would have a particular Friday in which they would be in in-person learning. What it means is there would be more students in school more often, which is reflective of what our community wants. It's not everybody in school all five days every week, but it's more days in school than not. Maintaining the PLC time for teacher planning, which I already talked about. Another thing that's a key point of this model, when you look at, with the exception of Fridays, your maroon group students and your gray group students will have the same days each week in which they are in school, in which they are in remote instruction. So hopefully that is going to help families in planning. And again, maroon group will be in-person Mondays and Wednesdays, gray group will be in-person Tuesdays and Thursdays, and there'll be an alternating in-person each Friday. So, and we can review this again at the end, but what is the determination of maroon and gray groups going to look like? So, pending the board's vote this evening, our process is this. Starting tomorrow, we will be making phone calls to families to make a final decision on a choice of remote only or participation in the hybrid model. Our starting point is that calls are going to be made to those who opted for the full remote program in the non-binding survey to confirm if that's what they still want. That provides us with a baseline. What we are asking parents to do, and we will send out a communication tomorrow to remind them of this, if you did not respond to either the survey or the follow-up phone call, please contact the office at your child's school to let us know if you prefer a full remote or hybrid by the end of the day Friday. Again, that's if you did not respond to either the survey or the follow-up phone call, please contact the office at your child's school to let us know if you prefer a full remote or hybrid by the end of the day Friday. The second piece that we ask for, because there may be some families who make this choice after this evening, if you opted for in-person learning in the survey, non-binding survey, and would now prefer remote only, please contact the office at your child's school also by the end of the day Friday. So people who either did not respond to phone calls or surveys, or people who are changing from in-person to remote, please contact our school offices by the end of the day Friday. A couple of things for families to remember. If you are selecting the remote-only option, it will be for a full ranking period commitment for the school in which your child attends, a trimester at EEMS and a quarter at Ellsworth High School and a Hancock County Technical Center. Those choosing a hybrid model, okay, may change to a full remote at any time. Just for clarification, we are going to be devising maroon groups and gray groups based upon the number of students remaining after we determine how many students are going to be in a remote model. Based upon those numbers, if a number of people went from remote and wanted to come into the hybrid model and be back in person, we would not know if we'd be able to accommodate that number of students based upon our capacity. However, if families want to move from in-person to hy, excuse, in-person to remote, they may make that choice. Once the numbers are finalized, based upon the communications of the balance of this week, our staff will use our scheduling software to establish the maroon and gray groups. And as the groups are established, schools will be contacting families directly to know, let them know what group they're in, and start talking about what their schedules are going to look like. Before I turn it over to our administrators, there are some things that all parents should know and be aware of, and these are general pieces. One is that the symptom screening checklist that is being devised must be completed before children come back to school and before staff members come back to school. Our school nurses will be providing information to all families and to staff members on what that will look like and how that can be done. Starting the school year, parents and visitors will not be permitted inside Ellsworth School Department buildings and facilities. School meetings involving individuals outside of the school will be scheduled to occur remotely. All students and staff will enter buildings through assigned and clearly identified entries. Student movement throughout the buildings will be reduced and managed to comply with required spacing, maximum numbers of students that can be in an area in the school, and to support the necessary cleaning and disinfecting. Traffic patterns for students, which would include changing classes, using restrooms, and any movement that's necessary for lunch or mask breaks, will be governed by specific protocols that are put forth to the students and signage that our maintenance department has worked with our administrators to procure. Mask breaks will be scheduled at the building level. Not only are they a requirement, but we need to do them. Student lockers will not be used in our schools. The reminder, and the thing we need to prepare for is for students who are coming to school in. in-person, they're expected to bring only what they need to school. Lunches will be provided in locations where the six-foot spacing and large group requirements, and that's less than 50 people in an area in the school at one time, may be satisfied and to maximize, excuse me, to minimize the number of locations that need to be cleaned and disinfected. At this point, what I would like to do, because I think a lot of what's going to be presented by our administrators is going to be helpful in answering questions that our families may have when trying to determine what model they would like to choose. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to our administrators. We'll start with our principal at EEMS, grades K through 4, April Clifford.
Good evening. So I'm excited to be up here and talk about the teaching and learning of each of the models that we have. So I'm going to start off kind of with the beginning of the day. So we're asking that students not be dropped off before 7:30 a.m. if you're coming for in-person. We ask that you give your child hugs and you do your goodbyes before they get on the bus or before they exit the car. Students, our staff, will be waiting inside the school to welcome your children and deliver them to their homerooms following appropriate social distance requirements. Breakfast is grab-and-go at this time and will be eaten in the classroom. For early dismissal, if you need to pick up your child before the end of the school day, parents will enter the vestibule and do a push button. There's currently a phone at EMS and it's being replaced with a button. You'll contact the office. The office will contact your classroom teachers, your classroom teacher. Your son or daughter will be delivered to the vestibule, and then you'll exit the building together. All right. Now the good stuff. All right. Here we go. Our teachers have been in their classrooms for the past three weeks, working on the physical layout of their classrooms to make sure that they're optimal for student learning. They have been moving and shifting and answering questions. So each student will have a space in the classroom that's kind of identified as what I'm calling their learning zone. All learning zones for students will meet CDC requirements from the state of Maine. Students will store all their personal belongings in this learning zone. All right? Student academics. So you're in-person and half the students are in your classroom. So during that time, your academics are tailored and individualized to your individual student. We are going to take the time in the beginning of the year to really assess, using a varying amount of assessments, to figure out exactly where kids are and individualize that work so they can move forward. Teachers are going to incorporate hands-on learning activities with individualized instruction to maximize student growth. All right? Teachers are also incorporating movement into their daily routine to support students. This is an example, chair bands, Play-Doh, WikiSticks, standing space, things like that within the classroom. Your teachers are all thinking about your whole child right now. So when students are on their remote learning days, teachers are going to send home at K-4 meaningful, individualized practice for students to complete when not in-person. So you're asking me, "What does this look like and how is it different than remote learning?" All right? So I'm telling you, what it's going to look like is teachers are, as an example, are going to do a slide of the day. The slide of the day is going to be shared with students. It's going to be a choice board. Students might be able to choose different activities within that choice board to complete. Those are going to be individualized for students to practice the instruction that was done the day before. Students in this process are going to be using an identified platform per grade level. So there'll be no switching of platforms based on what subject area that you have. All subjects are going to push in to the same platform. So parents and students go one place to get what they need. Students are going to complete those assignments. They might do a little e-Spark. They might do a little Google Classroom, depending on your grade level. But everything within the grade level is going to be consistent. Teachers will provide feedback to students within that environment, and it's in the same place. We're trying to eliminate the number of clicks and the number of places that parents and students have to go so that learning and accessing that information is easier. Attendance will be taken in both components. So as we're talking about the whole child, there are other components of school that aren't related to, that aren't from your classroom teacher. I'm talking about your OT, your PT, your speech, your special education, your GT, your Unified Arts. All of those models are seeing students from specific rooms. So as an example, if I'm a Title I teacher and I need to service a couple of students, I'm going to service students from the same homeroom at the same time to limit exposure. And then I'm going to clean and sanitize, and I'm going to get students from a different homeroom. So we're really trying to limit exposure for students. My glasses keep fogging up, so I can't read. I'm sorry. So we've really talked a lot about the Unified Arts and the Specialist, the Music PE Art. We're looking at scheduling them so that they're in their own classroom space. So you're going to travel to your art class, but teachers will see a smaller cohort of kids. So as an example, if I'm the music teacher for K-4, I'm not going to see all students K-4. What we're doing is we're trying to structure a schedule so that they see a smaller cohort of kids more frequently and see them, and then move on to another cohort of kids. We're trying to limit teacher exposure in that manner as well. We have created a system, or in the process of creating a system, where teachers can submit a request for a student mental health check-in. And teachers are going to commute with parents via email. Teachers will also share a weekly plan at the beginning of each week, and there will be additional check-ins with parents at teachers' discretion. If we find that there is a lack of participation from students either in-person or during the remote days, the teacher will communicate with the building administrator and will do checks. Recession is still happening. It's going to be scheduled in cohorts. And we are scheduling daily mask breaks. We are looking at creating some outdoor learning spaces as well. We just started that process today. And that's kind of what a picture of that hybrid environment looks like for students who are in-person and then on their remote day. So EMS looks a little different for a remote-only instruction. Does the board have any questions about the hybrid model before I move on? I know I went a little fast.
Yeah. I do.
Okay.
So when you were talking about the attendance in remote.
Yep.
So that would look like, like you're mentioning the slides, there might be a few activities for those children to choose from on their remote day.
Yep.
And so are they, is this something they're logging in to do?
Yeah.
So you know they were in attendance? Or is it a packet?
Yeah, no, it's not. It's a K, it's a K-4 program. K-3 is using CSO. Grade 4 is using Google Classroom. So it would be logging into CSO, and they would be looking and looking for things like that, giving feedback. Teachers should be giving feedback to students through that process, too.
Are we going to be requiring that those just be done by the end of the day?
I don't think we're setting a time limit on. What we want to do is we're really just concerned about participation and making sure that we're meeting the needs of students who are remote for, you know, half of their time. So we think that that's important. So there's no time limit set to that. There's no calls going out to parents or anything like that for those days.
So by attendance is just completing those tasks?
I think it's a check-in, just to see that they're, they're logging in and then that they have posted something. That kind of a check-in is what we're looking at.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, go on. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Are there restrictions for recess? What will recess look like?
I am not sure yet. I know that we're talking about scheduling in cohorts. I think I'm waiting for further guidance to see if, you know, about the equipment and all that stuff. We're hoping that we can do more. We're talking about alternatives, whether it's a mile club where you're walking and adding miles and traveling across the country, things like that. But I am not entirely sure yet, to be honest.
Okay.
I think, I think there are a lot of models that are being considered. Some of it is with the cohorts, which I think is a given, but using different spaces on the playground on different days so students can have a chance to rotate. There are other areas on the EMS property that can also be used under teacher supervision, which would also, in some cases, double with a mask break. But it would provide that physical activity and opportunity for students to play. The other piece, it's the challenges, what we can use to clean and disinfect the equipment so that if students are able to use it, what's the timeframe between one group using it, cleaning and disinfecting, and the next group getting to get there?
First, that's still a work in progress. We're just starting the conversations about that.
So those specials, those like art and music, is that still going to be done on like a weekly basis?
So that is really in progress. One of the things that is really important is that I want to try to limit exposure, being exposed to the all K-4 students. So the other piece that I am concerned about is that, so an example, let's say your first grader has art first trimester, and if we do everything the first trimester and no other trimesters, if students come in from remote learning to in-person, they wouldn't have the opportunity for art. So we're really trying not to eliminate that. I'm working with Mrs. Mitchell. She's our elementary art teacher. And Frances Kellogg, they had some ideas about a four-week cohort where you saw kids for four weeks each trimester, but you would see them a different number of times. So it would just be once a week or... So we're looking at that schedule. They are starting to draft that. We're finalizing lunchtimes and all that stuff because that's all related. But that's, that's really a beginning work in progress right now.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions about the hybrid? Did I miss a talking point? Perfect. I was a little nervous. So now I'm, I'm a little bit better now.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. So from here, the remote-only program looks a little different at EES. We have students that are K-4 and they need parent support. So what the structure that we're going to have is that we're going to have remote-only teachers. So if your, your child chooses remote-only, they're going to have a teacher that's assigned to them, like a homeroom teacher, a classroom teacher, and that's going to be the remote So that's a little bit different structure than other schools are having. One of the reasons we think we need that because of the support that students need. We felt that the hybrid or simultaneous casting of classes would not really work in a kindergarten classroom or a first-grade classroom. We didn't feel that that was educationally best for students. So with the way things have kind of, I've been really lucky with the way things have come together, it looks like we're going to have enough remote teachers to address those needs. So that looks different. In addition, we really looked at the feedback that was provided on that family survey and the staff feedback, and just really recognized what went wrong, how to improve, and how to make the educational programming better. And I think what we've come up with is a set of guidelines that differ per grade level for students, and that are based on feedback from parents and from teachers. They recognize what doesn't go well as well. So we have a set of guidelines, and I'm not going to read through the guidelines, but what I'm going to talk about is the consistency. So if I have a remote teacher and my student is in first grade, that remote teacher is going to be a part of the grade-one team. So what they're doing in school in the hybrid model is going to reflect and be the same for what people are doing in a remote-only environment. They're going to do things together as a team. You're not separated as a remote student at all. You're connected through your teacher, through those teams. We've also really worked to isolate the platforms and reduce the number of clicks for parents. So all specialists are going into the remote teacher's platform. So there'll be nothing that's separate, a separate entity. You've got to look for this video or this sheet or this activity. Everything's going to be in the same place. This was really said loud and clearly from our parents. We talked about teachers using email to communicate and asking that parents just say, "Hey, I got it," as a response. That was a big feedback from both sides, that they wanted to make sure that people just got what they needed, and we were sending it to the right email address. So in this program, there is consistent platforms and consistent expectations. In addition, there's whole-group sessions as well as small group and one-on-one as needed. There is a time expectation that's set there per day. There's a recommended time. And there's office hours for students and for parents to ask questions and get help remotely. That is consistent through K-4. For title teachers, it, they'll be accessing students once caseloads are identified and being able to support them as well. Unified Arts are pushing in to the classroom teacher's platform, and Special Ed is doing the same piece. And we have tools within our assessment systems to do assessments online so that students can complete those, and we can identify learning gaps like we would in in-person learning. And attendance will be taken for all whole, whole-group instruction. But that's kind of an overview of what that looks like. It is slightly different than the other programs because we're not really doing any simultaneous teaching. We have specific teachers who are identified as remote teachers. Any questions about that plan? Go ahead, ask away.
I do.
Yeah.
My only thought was, could there be consideration for those remote-only students to maybe meet their remote-only teachers in a one-on-one type? I don't know if it has to be a Zoom because of the nature of it, so that they're able to kind of ask questions and build a bond? Because it's a little different than coming to school and meeting your teacher.
So I know for the professional development days for EES staff, they're working on for your in-person, your classroom videos. We talked about this, the social stories, like this is what my classroom looks like. I'm your teacher. This is what I look like with my mask. This is what your learning space looks like, those kinds of things. So I think it would be similar. We're also talking about having a virtual open house with regard to that, but I think that that would be a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next principal up would be from EEMS, grades 5 through 8, Ms. Gavin Ellen.
Good evening. I'm very happy to be with you tonight and excited to, to talk to you about some of the details that we've come up with, with our hybrid plan as well. I don't think you can see, but I am smiling underneath this mask. So Mrs. Clifford mentioned some of the arrival and dismissal pieces. For the middle school students, we are talking also about trying to stagger some dismissal times so people typically in middle school gets dismissed together. So we're looking at just staggering those times and using different exits throughout the building to have them dismissed. Like Mrs. Clifford said, we are opening our door systems at 7:30, which is a change for middle school students. Typically, they've been able to wait in the vestibule and come in and go into the gymnasium and play basketball and things like that. But due to the gathering guidelines, we are unable to provide that for those students this time. So that will look a little different for middle school kids. Breakfast and lunch, like Mrs. Clifford said, will be a kind of a grab-and-go situation for breakfast. They'll grab their, their breakfast and go to their homerooms. Lunch is going to be staggered, and we will be bringing kids, or kids will go to the cafeteria to pick up their hot lunch and then go back to their classrooms. And we have a kind of a traffic pattern flow that we're working on within the building so that there's no overlap and kids aren't running into each other, and we're keeping our social distance and spacing. Academics. So our in-person model is having students attend their homeroom, get in their homerooms, and they'll travel to their classes to the extent possible. We're going to keep them in the wings. So for those who haven't been, have the privilege of visiting the middle school wings, it's really a nice setup where, for the most part, each grade level is in their own wing. So we are going to try to keep those students within the wing and traveling and making sure they're, they're getting their movement because that's really critical to middle school kids. That movement is so important. We're also going to be using, trying to be using outdoor space as well when it's appropriate and when we can get kids outside while the weather is still nice. And students will be traveling to their specials, resource room instruction, or any special services that they need, such as GT, OT, PT, things like that nature. On the remote day, all of the middle school teachers will be utilizing Google Classroom. So students will log into Google Classroom to have attendance taken, and there they will either find their lesson, assignment, or instructions for the day. The middle school... The middle school is currently looking at a mixture of synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. So there may be times where students are asked to log on during a class time to get that lesson in person as teachers are teaching. And there may be times where lessons are uploaded to Google Classroom, and students access their lessons that way for the remote day. And then they, they have a learning activity that goes with those lessons. So it's going to be a mixture. Part of the reason for the mixture is that, much like Mrs. Clifford alluded to, we really paid attention to the surveys, and we know that some of the, the middle school kids are kind of in that unique situation where they don't always have daycare options, and sometimes they need to be home alone. And so without that support at home, we felt that it might be challenging for them to log on to synchronous learning at specific times. So we really want to try to make options available for families so that that will help and, and aid in that way so that everybody can get what they need, even if they are remote. And the fully-remote students, the program will look much like those for the remote day. So they'll have a mixture of the synchronous and asynchronous learning. They'll log on for attendance, and that attendance can be taken in the morning. Teachers have a form. Kids can just click on the form, say they're here, and then they can complete their learning activities when they're able to do that. Grading and reporting. So grading and reporting practices are going to be used. As they were previously, we're going to use jump rope to report out to teacher, uh, to families and students. And families, parents can check jump rope on their own. They have logins that they can do that with, and so do students. So if students are remote and they have a question about, oh, what did I get on that assessment? They can log on remotely and check that. And students should be expected to complete and participate in the learning activities and assignments provided by all teachers. Mask breaks are going to be really critical at the middle level. So we are absolutely scheduling those in. We are right now in process of redoing our schedule based on this hybrid model to make sure, to ensure that teachers, uh, excuse me, students have equitable specials and get the same amount of minutes in each classroom that, that is required. So we're working on redoing the entire schedule, but we are building those mask breaks in, bathroom breaks, movement breaks into the day, so that they will be scheduled into the day. And then teachers can also give, provide those breaks for kids at their discretion. Water breaks. Students should prepare to be bringing a refillable water bottle. The water fountains will not be able to be utilized, but we do have refillable bottle fountains that they can use. And probably what's on every middle schooler's mind right now is recess. That seems to be the most important thing for our middle school students because that's the time where they get to socialize and be with their friends. So we are going to continue to have recess. We've designated four different areas of the middle school side. We have the softball field, the baseball slash soccer field, the track. And I don't know if anybody have seen middle school recess, but the four-square is like where it's at. So we've also designated that area, and we're going to be purchasing equipment like four-square balls, jump ropes, frisbees, things of that nature that students can utilize while they're out there. We'll have students wash hands before they go out. We'll sanitize everything before and after. And then we'll have students wash their hands when they come back in. So we have some procedures in place to keep that safe, but we wanted to make sure that we got students out for recess. And those are being scheduled in during the day as well. And students will enter and exit different ways when they go outside, so that won't be an issue either. Communication. So that was one thing that we heard loud and clear from the surveys as well. And teachers will be communicating weekly, similar to what Mrs. Clifford alluded to, where they'll get like a weekly memo from the teacher that will kind of outline what is taking place and transpiring for the week. So there'll be no surprises. Students will be able to log in and see what, what is expected of them on Google Classroom for the week, and parents will have that in the weekly memo, so they can check in with their child. Students can communicate with teachers at any time. We're building in times during the schedule, like RTI, study halls, things of that nature, where students can kind of zoom in with teachers if they need to, if they have questions, so that they don't have to go a whole day without connecting with a teacher. So there are different times that are built in throughout the day where students and teachers can communicate. And then students will be, excuse me, teachers will be scheduling some office hours to help with that remote learning as well. And then, like I said before, parents and students can access jump rope at any time to see their academic progress. The other thing that we're kind of concerned about at the middle level is finding ways to create that community feel. We really thrive, and our middle school students obviously thrive, on that social interaction. So we have ways for them to get the social, emotional help that they need still. We're working on like a help ticket system as well and scheduling times with the counselors during the day if that's needed, but also creating that community. So we're looking at trying to build an advisory period into our schedule so that there's a time each week, potentially Fridays, where students can be one homeroom, whether they're in-person or remote, they can all be together, and we can provide activities. We still want to look for times where we can do our Friends of Rachel Club and keep our Kindness Starts With Me momentum going. So there are different things that we're still looking at, but I feel really good about the work that we've done thus far. I've been meeting with teachers pretty regularly. I have a leadership committee that meets and they garner input from all the teachers, and they've been working really hard, and so I'm really proud of the work that we're doing. And I, I guess I just want to say too that I think students are going to follow our lead. I'm really excited to have the kids back. I can't wait to see them. I've missed them tremendously. I know there's a lot that goes with that. There's some anxiety. We want to, we're worried about safety, all of those things. But I think if we, if we can present that we're good with this and that even if it's not what people exactly want or what they're used to, then students will follow that lead. And so for my middle school kids, that's what I want them to see when they walk through the door. Smile, smiling face as much as possible, and that's what we are all working under the premise of. So while I know that this situation is not ideal, we are working very hard to make it the best we possibly can for our students and the safest we possibly can for students and staff. Any questions?
Everyone knows I do, right? Let's just be honest. Can you just clarify the options on remote days? So is it an option for the synchronous?
So I think we're still...
Or what was your idea?
Yeah, we're still figuring that out a little bit because it's so new to teachers. Like, I think that we have, we have to get a little bit of a feel for it. Like, what will it look like? And what does the technology look like? We don't have the technology yet.
Right.
We're working on that. So there's a little bit unknown there, which is why I think we said there's a mix. The other piece is that we are really concerned that some kids will be, you know, going to daycare or not be able to log on to the times where the classes are happening. And we don't want them to miss out on what's happening in the classroom if they can't log on. So we're finding ways to try to upload lessons or simulate the same thing. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm Italian. I talk with my hands. Even if we can't, even if they can't start, even if they can't log on at the time the lesson's happening. So we want to try to make it equitable for everyone and have, so that everyone has access. So that's why we're kind of, we're not really sure what it all will look like, but that's kind of what we're planning for and what we're going to be working with teachers on in the, in the coming weeks.
Right. Okay.
So I wish I could give you a better answer, but...
No, that's good. It's, it's helpful to know that, that concern of not knowing where, like a fifth grader, you know, is on that lower end of not being able to be home. So that's my, you know, that was my concern too, yeah.
Yeah, and we have, yeah, we have such a wide variety where an eighth grader could probably manage to log on and get all those lessons and log on to the right class time, and then know in fact that they can because Mr. Clifford's incoming eighth, ninth graders have managed that during the spring. So it is pretty vast in development in the middle school, and each grade is a little bit different and needs a little bit, something a little bit different, but we're going to work on consistency within the grade level.
Okay. And I had one more question.
Sure.
Is the recess intended as a mask break?
Yes, we're gonna...
That's their...
Yep. Yeah, so we're building that in, and lunch, obviously lunch will be a mask break as well, but we're building in other mask breaks as well just because I think it's important for that to be visible to kids so that they see, oh, I'm going to get a break in like 10 minutes, especially for the middle school kids who tend to not know what to do with their bodies a lot of times. So I think it's important that that's built into the schedule so they can see it on their schedule, but also to teacher discretion, if you're getting a feeling from your, your class that they just need a break, you can take them outside for five minutes and say, hey, let's take a break, or do something like that when, when you're seeing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure. I'm sorry, I can't see you.
So, real quickly, can we talk about lunches?
Sure.
I know that you had mentioned that lunch and breakfast was going to be an on-the-go thing, so is it my understanding, I'm, excuse me if I didn't hear this right, because that's a distinct possibility given my situation, are kids going down to cafeteria, grabbing the lunch, and coming back after their classroom?
Yeah, so with, with, not just by themselves, but with, with help and keeping the spacing as they go through. But yes, those who are taking hot lunch will go and get their lunch. Those who have cold lunch will already have it with them because the belongings will be in the classroom.
Great. So when we're considering this, is that, is that travel time part of the 20 minutes? Or are we making any special arrangements to give kids who are getting a hot lunch a little bit extra time to get that lunch?
Yeah, we're built, yeah, sorry. We're building that into the schedule, and I should have mentioned that. But yes, where, you know, not every student that's going to be in-person will have hot lunch. We can stagger that a little bit better, and it's not so, it won't, I don't think it'll be as time-consuming, but we are scheduling that in, so we are taking that into consideration.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Great. Thank you so much.
Next up would be Mr. Clifford, Principal at Ellsworth High School.
Good evening. So Ellsworth High School looked a lot like EEMS and the ATTC when Amy Comeon comes up here. First of all, we asked the parents and students try not to arrive before 7:30 in the morning, consistent K through 12. Students may, they will have to have masks on before they enter. And we had to be strategic about how they were going to enter, where they're going to enter, just because of the gathering. So bus students and freshmen will enter through the main office. Seniors driving or being dropped off will enter through the library faculty side entrance. Sophomores and juniors driving or being dropped off will enter through the door between the stagecraft and health room adjacent to the junior parking lot. So we'll have three different areas that they will enter. Breakfast is available in the cafeteria, so they would just take that and go directly to advisory in the morning. That would be the first area that they would go to, right to advisory from 8:50, 7:50 to 8 o'clock, will have advisory first, and then they'll go to their first class. Early dismissal, parents will enter in the vestibule and push the button to communicate to the front office, and then their child will meet them there, and then they can exit. End-of-the-day dismissal, student will be dismissed by floors and by wings. Again, back to the 50-assembling, we have a lot of wings where we'll have more than 50, and so we'll have to dismiss by individual classrooms. And same entry, same entrances and exits as they arrived in the morning. So that's how they will exit also in those three areas. Breakfast and lunch, again, breakfast is available in the morning, go to advisory. Right now, we're looking at two different lunches, and we're setting up desks in the cafe and cafeteria area six feet apart, and so they will get their lunch, and they will sit at a desk in those two areas. We're hoping to do it with just the two lunches. Not, we normally have three lunches. We're hoping to do it with just the two lunches, and that'll save on traffic flow also. The physical classroom makeup, and we do have classrooms that are already set to go. Classes have been arranged to six-foot distancing. All classroom common areas are being cleaned between classes. Desk tables have been arranged in regular traffic patterns. All classrooms are being provided with hand sanitizer, and students' belongings will travel with them during the day. No lockers will be used. That won't be much of a transition. A lot of our students don't use their lockers. They have their backpacks or multiple backpacks, and it's been that way for years. Academically, so the hybrid in-person instruction. We're going to keep our seven periods, and they will meet every day. There won't be any focused learning during that time. Students will be assigned to either a maroon or gray cohort. Maroon cohort attends Monday and Wednesday. The gray cohort attends Tuesday and Thursday. Friday's alternate, maroon one week and gray the next. Assessments will remain the same with no less than five summatives in a quarter and no more than 10 in a quarter. Attendance will be taken daily each class period. The hybrid remote learner, students will attend all classes on their remote days synchronously. Cameras will be installed in classrooms. So what that'll look like is the camera will follow the teacher around, and the technology is, we're hoping to have a screen in the back of the room, and so those that are signing in from home will be on the screen, and it's interactive. So teachers can answer any questions that they have or anything like that. Needing materials will be provided by teachers during the in-person instructional day, so they'll plan ahead and give students what they need for the following day. Google Classroom and Zoom will be the main platforms used. Full remote, as detailed above, with materials being provided to families that they can either pick them up or they'll be sent online. Assessments will remain the same with no less than five summatives in a quarter and no more than 10 in a quarter. Attendance is taken daily each class period. As far as communication goes, teachers will communicate with parents, students via email or phone, as we always have. Advisors may communicate with parents, students via email or phone. Teachers will communicate with students via Google Classroom or Zoom. After three absences, parents will be contacted by the main office or a teacher so they know exactly where they are attendance-wise. In the hallways, movement throughout school will be limited to minimize potential transmission. Social distances of six feet will be maintained while in the hallway. Bathroom breaks. Classrooms that have bathrooms, scheduled routine cleaning will be, will occur throughout the school day. Classrooms without bathrooms, students' usage will be scheduled, and routine, routine cleaning will be scheduled throughout the day. And the large communal bathrooms will be closed, and the individual bathrooms will be used, which is easier for cleaning and less time. Daily mask breaks, again, we will have the same, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and obviously at lunchtime. Extra and co-curricular activities, you know, we're just waiting on some decisions being made by the NPA and DLE, and we're going to follow those guidelines. I know people chiming in right now may want to know what's going on with fall sports. We're not sure yet. We're waiting on that guidance. Any questions on any of that? Again, it's a lot of the same, and, and I, like the other principals, just looking forward to seeing the kids in person and tired of seeing them on a screen and want to talk to them and really looking forward to the next couple of weeks coming.
I did have a question. I'm sorry, Dan. I didn't make that clear. A couple of things that I had thought of and maybe, oop, we're over there. Is the same situation for our full-remote students going to have full-remote teachers?
Not at the high school level.
Not at the high school, because they would be syn...
We have those cameras.
Yep. So they're gonna, if they're full-remote, they'll synchronize every day?
We were looking at that before the cameras. Having the cameras is a game changer. Yeah, so they will sign into class every day.
Or will they be in, assigned to a cohort so they're getting the same amount of instruction time as the students to their part?
So they will, if I understand your question, so they'll have a schedule like everybody else?
Okay.
And they'll, yep, and they'll sign into that class.
Okay. And then I, I didn't get a chance to ask Erica that, but...
Yeah, so we are not, we don't have fully-remote cohorts or groups like that either.
Okay.
So they'll be, that's why we're doing the asynchronous and synchronous as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then a recommendation, and I happened to hear this on the news the other day, of districts now realizing that dress codes need to be enforced for our, like you were mentioning a screen up, so you have the students there, there at home that day, that they be following dress code because that could potentially be a problem.
So, you know, some things that we learned from last spring. So those that choose remote, there'll be expectations that will be sent home, and dress is part of that, and where they are when they are remote is part of that also, where they are in their, in their house.
In their homes, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had. Thank you.
And we have Mrs. Bowles, Hayek County Technical Center. And we have Mrs. Bowles, Hancock County Technical Center.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. I'll focus specifically on our overarching goal for this, which was to maintain the integrity of career and technical education and the state 350-hour requirement that students have to meet, both in the classroom and within the live work setting. So for HCTC arrival and dismissal will look very much the same, with the exception of when the buses arrive, they're not going to dump all the kids at all the same time. One bus will dismiss at a time, and we'll have a designated time for drivers to arrive as well. For us, our in-person instructional days will look very much like they do now, with the CDC guidelines put in place as well. Our teachers, like the high school, will be synchronous, so teachers will be able to reach those students that are in the remote days, as well as fully-remote. And for us, instruction will continue Monday through Friday seamlessly. So Monday, live instruction will happen, and Tuesday, that group of kids will change, but the learning will continue from what happened on Monday, because of the technology. The difference for the kids that are home and remote, our programs are two hours, and so we have no expectation that a high school student will log on at 8:30 and expect to receive direct instruction for two hours straight. We just don't do that. That's not good practice. So students will log on, receive their direct instruction, and then the teacher will probably dismiss the remote learners at that time. And that's when that live work and those skill practices will occur for the students that are in-person. And then the next day, that next group that comes in will get their live work practice done. So if you're home and remote, you'll synchronize in for direct instruction, and then you may have videos to watch, follow-up activities that reinforce the learning to help get you ready for that live work skill practice the next day. Those students that are fully-remote will also have designated office hours to receive extra help, should they need it. We'll have set times in the morning and in the afternoon for students. The biggest question that I receive is, if I choose fully-remote, will I get certified? So really, what's going to have to happen is that's going to have to be a family discussion with me, and it's going to be highly dependent upon the program and how long that decision to stay in remote learning lasts. And then families can make decisions accordingly. Also, probably the other biggest question I get is, a lot of our live work involves collaboration with the business community, and us either sending students to internships or live work. That, to me, is phase two. We don't start any of those things, even in a normal year anyway, until October. September is all about building routines, building relationships, and doing safety certifications for our students. So for us, we are starting to plan and discuss those types of things, but those typically don't start until phase two of our school year anyway. So we feel okay about that. Our grading and communication practices will stay the same, whether you are remote or in-person. Staff has always kept a communication log and worked hard to communicate with all families, and that will continue. We do have a population of all-day students that will eat lunch at HCTC. They've always had access to our free and reduced lunch program, and that will continue, and we'll utilize our cafeteria, so that students will receive that in a safe way, and we can do it with the small numbers that's six feet apart. The last thing that I think it's important to talk about is, for those of you that are watching from districts other than Ellsworth High School, I have been meeting weekly with every high school principal in Hancock County, and I assure you that we're working hard to come up with schedules for kids so that they can be a part of both. So, over the spring with the survey data, one of the biggest complaints HCTC received was that kids oftentimes were stuck in this place of, my math class is meeting at my high school, and you're having class two. So we're going to work really hard to eliminate that barrier for kids in the fall. Are there any questions? Jenny?
Of course.
I'll call on you.
Yep. So, how does that vary? So if they're, say they're the maroon and gray, so you have a student that's there Monday and Wednesday. Is that live work going to continue for most of that day? So it kind of makes up for the fact that they're not doing that live work what they used to do Monday through Friday?
Right. So, the way HCTC typically worked was, some days were your live work day, and sometimes it was split. You might get direct instruction for 20 minutes and then do your live work. Or if you had preschool, it was your whole period. So staff is really looking at, how are we going to meet the industry standards? And how are we going to meet the live work hour requirements per program, based on that? So it's really going to be a mix. The live work will be the focus on the in-person days. But we want to have that sense of community, so that at the beginning of each period will be the time when kids are zooming in synchronously. We'll take attendance for everyone, kind of do our check-in, any instruction, any announcements, and that's how we build our communities, by doing it then. And then we'll dismiss kids when the instructional part is over, so that then this teacher can focus on the kids that are doing their live work.
Super. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
And next, our director of special education is going to do two separate presentations, one on special education and services, and the other on something that's really been a major focus over the past several months, including over some of the social, emotional, and mental health of our students and our staff. Director McKeever-Martin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start giving a little bit of perspective about what the district looks like. We have 242 students on IEPs in the district, and we have 111 students with 504s district-wide. So that's a lot of special services and accommodations to look at. Something to think about when you think about special education in 504, there's some themes. We're planning, think of the themes of individualization, transparency, collaboration, and communication. IEP teams and 504 teams will continue to meet remotely in response to social distancing and safety guidelines, as was referenced earlier. And I think it's important to remember that special education is really a subsystem of each school, and it may look somewhat different within each school in order to meet the individual and unique needs of students as they are identified through the IEP or through the 504 process. So special education students will follow each school building schedule to the extent possible, given their individualized instruction needs, and follow all safety protocols. When learning remotely, instruction delivery time is based on developmental and individual readiness. And I want to assure people, and I have this in bold for myself, the IEP and the 504 will remain intact. Whether we are remote or hybrid learning, those documents are not going to change. It still requires a planning and process and team collaboration to make any sort of change that is enduring and lasting. So it is important to note that remote and hybrid instruction may impact service times and the method of delivery for specialized instruction. The Maine Department of Education is providing guidance that IEPs will now reflect hybrid or remote plans in the accommodations section to ensure transparency of service changes due to COVID. There will be contingency learning plans developed to specifically delineate those differences in remote and hybrid instruction and referenced in accommodations in the IEP document itself. Supported services, such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, BCBA, vision and deaf, vision and deaf and parot hearing consultation, still there, remains accessible. The services, the services may look differently, again, based on the hybrid or the remote model, and that contingency learning plan will reflect that. All special education providers will have the ability to schedule virtual appointments for students and families, much as referenced by the people who have already spoken, that individualization piece. Service providers will team with special education staff in remote sessions for students choosing the all-remote option in order to have eyes on students, to be able to provide feedback and to answer questions. Speech providers are in the unique position of being able to provide some teletherapy services as needed, and we will also be looking at low-tech, no-tech options for reinforcing skills at home for parents who request that for equity purposes. Not everybody learns well through a computer, and we need to recognize that, especially with students who have disabilities. So what are the evaluation expectations? As you can imagine, we have a bit of a backlog of kids that need to be evaluated. So evaluations and new referrals are documented and will be conducted in the order that they were received. New referrals will be considered, including teacher reports from the previous, pre-COVID year, parent reports of the experience during the closure, and data collected in the first, I would guess, eight to 12 weeks of the new school year. As you heard, that's what everybody is planning to do, collect data. Safety procedures will be in place for evaluations, masks, plexiglass shield, social distancing when possible, well-ventilated rooms, maybe even a little canopy tent outside. Students will be dropped at the door for evaluations and met by the evaluator. Parents will participate in phone interviews when appropriate, and some rating scales can now be filled out online, which I think teachers are going to really like, that they don't have to do it by hand anymore necessarily. So instructional expectations for special education. Teachers, as noted here, will have consistent platforms for instruction, communication, and assessment based on the building, principal, staff expectations. So you've heard all of those outlined, and in special education, at each grade level, we're going to mirror what we're doing and then individualize from there. So special educators have an ongoing weekly, at minimum, expectation, sorry, they have an ongoing weekly, at minimum, contact, running record with parents and students since school closure. They reached out, they had a form to fill out, it was full of progress monitoring. What are you doing? Do you have concerns? What are we going to do moving forward? And we have that since, I think, March 22nd is the day we started doing that. I have nearly 5,000 entries. So it'll be a really good way to look at where kids are in the fall. So that, we're going to continue that. We did it through extended school year services, and we will continue using that as well throughout the start of the next year. Students are also expected to attend remote instruction sessions. As noted, there will be attendance taken. Special educators will be collaborating with families and guardians to ensure that remote access and success is established by decreasing barriers and increasing skills, such as working together to help a student learn to wear a mask, or assisting with understanding the teaching platform or app for students and parents. That, that's been an identified barrier as well. So how will we help your child move forward? Both in-person and virtual instruction is calculated to provide appropriately ambitious work, allowing students to make forward progress that provides a meaningful educational benefit in light of that child's unique circumstances. And that is really the crux of everything that we do in special education. We'll begin closing the COVID learning gap as soon as we return. Special educators will be gathering baseline data, virtually and in-person. This includes collaborating with teachers from the previous year, consulting with support services, and collaborating with families and guardians. For accurate data, as I mentioned earlier, expect it to take a while. We want the kids to settle in, we want to know that they're feeling okay with their routines. We want to, we really need to know that we're getting the best information possible, because we're informing their instruction for their IEPs. Staff's also going to determine what the steps are necessary to close that COVID learning gap, and that, and look at what may have, what areas they may have progressed in. Staff will create instructional opportunities that allow students to gain skills in which he or she may have progressed, and that will be also while looking at how to give them the appropriate level of challenge to move them forward. I think that's been a really good, good comment I've had from a lot of people, just informally, is how are we going to make the kids move forward? We're going to look at where they are, we're going to fill in those gaps, and we're going to keep plugging along. Special educators will be increasing individualized remote instruction and in, and monitoring for the whole child. That's the academic, social, emotional, and physical well-being. They're going to collaborate with families more. Support service providers and consultants will continue to be a critical piece of educating students with disabilities. Wondering how will we improve the service, how will we refine the plans? How are we going to problem-solve? We're going to have regular teaming. Weekly contact with families, as I mentioned before, that progress log will still be monitored and filled in. There will be specialized meetings with contracted consultants as needed and as requested. There'll be real-time communication with staff via purp, compliant messaging to problem-solve quickly. And I got to say, the special education staff rocks it. And I can watch everybody problem-solve in a chat conversation. It is really pretty phenomenal to see. I talked about low-tech, no-tech options still being out there for people, and that the virtual learning will really include that individualized instruction. We talked about having cameras in the rooms and that synchronous learning. That's really not going to work for special education. The needs are too individualized, you get purp issues in there. But it, what's most important, I think, about special education is that we are looking very closely at, how do we really one-on-one work with kids? And how do we spread that staff support, so that we're using people effectively to help the kids on 504 plans, maybe? Or help, help support anyone who really has a need and is struggling. You may not always have your case manager be the person that reaches out to you. Most of the time, you guys will have the case manager reach out, reach out to you, but we learned quickly last year that that's not always the best point person on an IE team. So we identified the person who maybe is most familiar with the child or is most familiar with the family, and, and looked at that individual need, and identified a point person that way. So when we look at what remote learning looks like, the team is going to be looking at the students' documented needs on the IEP or 504, the pace at which the student learns, the capacity the student has to learn independently, and that's impacted by development K4 is not going to look like 5'8", is not going to look like 912, same thing in special education. And we are also looking at what support is available at home. How can we help with that support? Can we help you learn some tech that maybe your kid knows? We know most five-year-olds can show us things that we've never learned before. So that, that's going to be part of the support. I've gotten a lot of questions about masks and face coverings for students, and the reasonable accommodation, given that we are in a pandemic situation, is that a face shield is an acceptable accommodation. I'm going to quote straight from the Maine Department of Education. "Students with medical, behavioral, or other challenges who are unable to wear masks or face coverings may wear a face shield that extends below the chin and back to the ears." Personal protective equipment, and I don't think I've ever been so excited about getting guidelines in my life as I was to receive the guidelines on PPE and how that's going to work for kids who have one-to-one support. I'll tell you, I've been pretty worried about that. So the guidelines have come out, and they were reviewed by CDC and DHHS, and these are for when the six-foot distance cannot be maintained. The guidelines are specific, and they include bus monitors, people assisting with wheelchairs, bathrooming, discreet trial instruction, occupational therapy services, yay, physical therapy services, speech services, nursing services, and PPE requirements for the possibility of a staff or student identified with COVID-19 symptoms. It's a very comprehensive piece of information. So some kids are in the position where there are behavioral challenges, and we have a lot, we have actually more staff trained in safety care, which is a de-escalation of physical management system that is required by law. And I think that that is great, because it allows a larger number of people to be able to help and assist with a child if they are in distress. That being said, hands-on a child is the last thing anyone ever wants to do. And I think we only had two, I'll swear to two incidents last year, but it might have been three. So it's very rare, but I'll bring this up nevertheless. Safety care has also put out guidelines, and they include what PPE to wear, what does your debrief look like? And I want staff to hear loud and clear that if you are indeed involved, they also have guidelines about extra special care after you have been involved, because the PPE piece is complicated when you're in a restraint situation. So that's the safety care piece. A collaboration, I want to assure people that we're still working for the, working with the Maine Educational Center for the Deaf or Hardened Hearing, Catholic Charities for Students with Vision Challenges. We still have our board-certified behavior analyst, bless him for being who he is. He is our autism consultant. We still have Pine Trees Society for Communication Assessments. And we still have Maine Psychological Assessment and Consultant Services, who does evaluations in addition to our in-house evaluator. And we have another privately contracted evaluator for assessments as well. Virtual and in-person supported mental health services. We are talking about the well-being, I'm moving on to the social, emotional piece. Want to pause there and ask questions?
Other questions on the special education component?
I tied them together a little.
Of course there is.
Questions?
Of course. So when you're just explaining the PPE guidelines, the, I'm assuming that would be to the full extent, so maybe gowns and whatnot?
Interestingly, no. Not, no, they are actually not recommending gowns. I don't believe we have, as a team, come up with a consensus on whether we are going to say that or not, but no, the gowns are not unless to say that or not, but no, the gowns are not unless you're dealing with, this is the fun of special education, unless you're dealing with bodily fluids.
Yes.
Then probably you're not going to be wearing gloves or goggles and a gown. A nurse may be, if she's taking care of somebody with COVID-19 symptoms or doing a nebulizer treatment. We do have kids on 504 plans, for example, who have asthma and may need that. So anything that's kind of aerosolized, anyone in that area has a whole different, I think they, yes, they even have to have an N95 mask. So those are very specific requirements. For students, just to give an example, working one-to-one with discreet trial instruction, they are not going to have to gown up and put the gloves on.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
The whole nine yards.
It just allows them to be in close contact to teach.
It allows them to be in closer proximity, given the safety guidelines. And again, it does go back to, we still need the child to wear a mask or face shield, but I think that these guidelines are allowing for that one-to-one direct interaction that I personally was fairly panicked about.
Right.
So, anything further on that?
Nope, that was it.
No? Okay. And those are actually accessible, I think, on the DOE website. Anyone can look those up. Want me to move on to mental health services? Going once, going twice?
If there are no more questions yet?
All right, moving on. So, parents and guardians can receive or support regarding academic, social, and emotional and behavioral development still. I think people will recall, a letter came out from the mental health staff this summer, or this spring, actually, talking about what services they were able to give. That does not change, they will still do that whether they're in person or whether they are remote. The students can check in to process and problem solve social-emotion concerns they may be experiencing. Check-ins are available during school hours. OnceHub is the program that we are using, we've all switched to that, even in the special education department, we're now scheduling that way, but it's the program that allows you to see what appointments are open with a clinician, and then just put your name in, and boom, you're in. So they, the clinician looks and says, oh, I have an appointment with Mr. and Mrs. Smith at 10 o'clock today. So it's really convenient for families. Staff can also, you've heard people refer to this, we're looking at making a referral system where the appropriate clinical staff is informed via a ticket system of concerns about a child. There will not be confidential information within that ticket, it would just be, hey, can you please check in with so-and-so? It would be up to the person, the clinician, to follow up verbally with that teacher to see what the concerns are. And it's really a good way to keep track of how many people are seeing these concerns, how often we're seeing these concerns, is this level of concern for this child rising? And it really helps us manage that, and that's district-wide. It's layered on to more systems that we already had in place. For example, the high school had a, has a risk review system in which people have made referrals. There's a good system at the K8 level where people can just say, hey, Brenda, Stacy, this is what's going on. So this formalizes it a little bit more. So who is on our mental health team? Who are the people who are making these decisions about what's going to happen and giving guidance to the, the group that is sitting here with you today? I started counting how many years of experience was in that group, and I stopped at 130. And I was pretty impressed. So it's comprised of our special education consultant, who is our educational examiner. He gave us a lot of those years. We have three licensed clinical social workers, two licensed clinical professional counselors, a behavior specialist, and the guidance counselors in the system. They weren't able to participate every time because of their own demands, but that's quite an impressive group of people to have put their heads together. And what they were tasked with doing was vetting valid and reliable resources in the areas of trauma, social-emotional learning for children in a pandemic and in a virtual environment. And all of this is, they, they put it all in the box of, okay, we're in school closure, so everything has been turned upside down. They were able to gather information from personal research, from participating in MDOE webinars, and they are still, still getting messages, hey, did you see this webinar? I'm going to register. And, and they're really committed, and this is their summer break, so they're very committed to working. Clinicians are developing training for staff in the areas of trauma-informed practices for educators and for social-emotional learning for educators, and that will be district-wide when we return to school. And I think it's really important to say, because more and more people are understanding what this is, that the group really understands the impact of adverse childhood events, otherwise known as ACEs, and how they impact children at school and what signs they need to look for. So they can give resources to staff, to students, and to families around that area. And I would really stress to the public, they really want to help, they really want to problem solve, they really want a team with you, so please, virtually sign up, give them a call, when we get back into school, they're ready, they're ready to work. So staff, what about staff? Staff needs support too, right? I'm thinking you're fairly stressed out out there, everybody. I can see it through the screen. We mentioned that we're going to contract with someone to help with yoga, and there's the natural supports, we have mentoring programs, administrators are always there to listen, we have clinical staff in the house, but we are also partnering with a group that offers a year-long program on stress reduction for educators. That is the, the name of it. It provides staff with direct access to clinical social workers, it provides COVID resources and mental health support, virtual live education series with guest consultants, a virtual live informational seminar, virtual live discussion sessions, there's a mental health toolbox that comes with that, self-care seminars, and they're connecting staff with a community of like-minded educators. I don't, I think they're going to group in cohorts, not necessarily in the same school, but with people who have the same interests, because this isn't just our school that they would be working with. And there's going to be 24-hour access to the resources and the support. They can talk live to the clinicians that are running this, and clinicians will make referrals if they see that there's a problem to our EAP program or to local providers. And they're really hoping to pull together peer groups so they can share similar experiences, and they will give instruction and materials that are based on staff needs. And I think it's important to say that these clinicians have experience in public schools, private schools, special education, and behavior programs. They get it, they've lived it, they know where we are now, probably fairly thankful they're not here with us right now. So that is what we're offering for staff. Not talking long, guys, it's just that I can't see, so it's large font. I think my take-home message really is, please, to staff, to families, and to students, don't tough this out alone, okay? That's not what this is about. We want to be here to help, we have many layers of help to offer. Reach out for that consultation. Ask for tips on how to help your kid who won't sit in front of that screen for five minutes. Enlist us in that collaborative problem solving to make school successful for your child. I can't help if I don't know there's a problem, I've said that many times, please reach out to me, I look forward to hearing from people, and I really want to problem solve with you. And I would say, in ending, that remember, kindness starts with me, and that alone can start a chain reaction of positive collaborative interactions that support our students and our staff because we're all in this together. Any questions about the mental health piece? If you want to ask, I know you do.
No, good. That's fine. Paul's up?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, and I, I hope she can hear us, Mrs. Sargent, Adult Education, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
I think we can hear you, Annie. You might have to speak up a little bit, but this is Annie Sargent, our Adult Education Director, to talk about what she has in store for her adult education program.
I'm glad to be here, virtually in this case. Sometimes I feel like adult education is a totally different kettle of fish, but I will go through a similar description. So I'll start with academics. When we organize our programs, COVID or no COVID, we start with an individual learning plan, and that won't change for each learner, and then we design class sessions, daytime and evening hours, to meet the needs of all of our learners. So that will be the thing for in-person. Additionally, all of our learners, in-person, hybrid, or hybrid, are going to be provided with a, an onboarding orientation, including skills, assessment of skills, knowledge, logistics, device, and internet access, in case remote is either their best option or if remote learning is the district's only option if things change. Another thing with our in-person is that students will stay in one classroom and teachers will move instead of students, maintain cohort of students, limiting exposure. Our hybrid model is going to look something like this, all of our learners meet individually with advisors, either myself or one of our teachers, and will meet with all incoming learners for the year for orientation and assessment. And again, the assessment will be expanded to include assessment of skills, internet device access, and logistics for remote learning. And for any adult learner interested and able to participate in remote learning, we will provide an onboarding training session that will teach them the skills needed to make sure they'll have success in the remote learning phase to phase. That's something that we learned in the spring, that when we just went remote automatically without that onboarding process, it was very challenging for our learners. And then the other thing is that we really are encouraging some remote learning for all learners because it's critical to teach the, to present the, yes, workforce, and many college programs require online learning. So that's the silver lining of our experience last fall, or last spring. We hope also to have cameras so that some of the learners who are doing remote learning or hybrid learning will be able to participate in our onsite classes, and our teachers will also meet individually with learners to meet their needs as well, as some of our learners will actually learn better with other remote learning tools, so we'll send packages and communicate by phone, providing sort of a more old-fashioned, independent study option for learners. Like the K12 programs, we'll be using Google Classroom and Zoom for remote, and our full remote will look, you know, the same schedule as we have, because we'll use a remote synchronous approach, except when another approach works better for a particular learner. The adult education scheduling approach will not change, whether it's in-person or remote, and it will be a combination, as it always is, of cohorts and individual sessions, as well, the added option is going to be off of hours. It's going to be a student-driven schedule that meets the needs of adult learners, daytime and evening hours, which is more of a practice in adult ed than in a school. And again, for the remote, a Google Classroom and Zoom. In terms of communication and mental health, the expectations for learners and teachers, we do, we commonly, already do, an agreement during the onboarding process, making a learning plan that includes a communication plan that meets the needs of our learners. We try to be a student-centered as we can be. So teachers will communicate at least once a week with learners who are remote about their learning and their emotional well-being, as well as logistics during this, during their remote learning, using the learner's preferred method. We have a lot of students who experience both housing and food insecurity, so checking in on their well-being is critical for our work. And we have weekly case counseling sessions, and this past spring, they were remote, and we will continue to do those, both in-person and remote. And then arrival is a, is a whole different kettle of fish than when you look across the part of the EMS, because people come in a lot of the time, and they're expected to do self-checks, much like parents are expected to do that with kids. And then we'll be doing, the receptionist will do a pre-screening using the intercom because the doors will be locked, and only the students and their support person and our staff are permitted in the building, so people can't sit and read. People can bring, in terms of food, people can bring their own food and drinks into the center, but must keep them at their desk, and no food will be provided or shared. Mask breaks will take place outdoors, and most of our students are in the building for two to four hours at a second, so mask breaks might not be as important as for the fall. And finally, I just wanted to say for people who are interested in knowing about our enrichment and workforce offerings for the fall, I, at this point, it's looking like most of our enrichment classes will be remote in the fall, because it may be hard to use school buildings until we figure out as a district that we see in those buildings. Our catalogs will come out later than usual, sometime in September, and our classes will be going on the website as they are scheduled. So over the next few weeks, we'll be adding classes day by day to the, to our website if you want to check that out. We will be providing Zoom workshops and practice sessions for people so that they can learn how to use those. And we also are going to have a webpage dedicated to free and affordable workforce, workshops and events that might be of interest to folks in the community. We plan to focus on enrichment, focus on our academic program and workforce training in the fall, and plan to focus on enrichment and enrichment spending, and that's the work for our focus. Any questions?
I, I have a question, not necessarily just Annie, but Dan as well. Like the adult ed, those enrichment classes that would normally have happened in the evenings in our schools, that will not be allowed because we're not going to have visitors?
At, at this time, and Annie, I don't know if you heard the question, before I try to answer it, and then I'll let you do it. It was about enrichment classes in the schools. Yeah, right, right now, we're not allowing public access into the buildings.
Okay.
So when we have our day students who are part of our regular schedule, those students will be there on their regularly scheduled days.
And that's at the Mill Mall office? I mean, the, like their day, the adult ed day classes?
Oh, I, I was referring to the students K through 12.
Oh, right, right.
But when you're talking about students coming in from, from wherever, we're limiting access on that to the public school buildings.
I see.
But Annie's other programs are located in her new space at the Mill Mall.
At the Mill Mall, okay.
Annie, did you hear all that? And if I missed something, please add to it or correct it.
Yes, I think it's really important that, as a school district, that our adult, not, our adult students in the enrichment program not access the building until we get a handle on, you know, the deep cleaning and so on. So yes, it will be difficult to find any space because we don't have space in our center for enrichment classes, so it's likely that all of our classes would have to be online.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, Jen?
Yes.
I think it was Jen.
It was, of course.
It's hard, it's hard for me to, I'm, see, I'm watching you on Facebook, but it, but it, there's a delay, so I can't really tell.
Nope, that was great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your question.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Next up is our Curriculum and Assessment Director, Mrs. Corwin Ramos. She's going to talk a little bit about professional development that's taking place.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Great, okay. An important part of a successful school year is having teachers who feel comfortable with our curriculum, the methods of delivery of instruction, and supporting the needs of their students. So to that end, we are offering the following during two days of training next week. We will have training on using Zoom, which has a feature of being able to have breakout rooms for small group instruction, for using the newest version of Jump Rope, and, which has some new features that'll help teachers. We'll have two sets of classes around Google Classroom for teachers. One will be our Google Classroom 101, which will be an introductory piece and some of the basic pieces of Google Classroom, as well as an advanced Google Classroom class with Screen Castify, which is a feature that allows teachers to make videos and record themselves, to send out to kids so that they can learn in that way. We'll also be having trainings for kindergarten through third grade, who will be using Seesaw as their learning platform, a basic Seesaw class, as well as an advanced Seesaw class. And I'm very excited about a resource that was introduced to me. And I'm very excited about a resource that was introduced to me by one of our teachers, Jane Stackpole, called The Distance Learning Playbook by Fisher, Frye, and Hattie, three writers and researchers we've been working with and other books. And that is a book that comes both with an ebook and a paperback book that we have purchased for all of our teachers, that has embedded videos about management online for teachers, self-care, ideas of keeping students engaged, unique ways of delivering instruction remotely. And I think they're really going to appreciate these videos. One of our own teachers, again, Melanie Brown, went through that whole resource and developed a slideshow for our teachers, pointing out different pieces that she found very helpful. So I'm excited to send those out to our teachers tomorrow morning, as well as a Seesaw resource that Alexis Chapman and Susan Frost developed, two of our teachers in the elementary school, that will have videos for parents on how to use Seesaw, and helpful videos for teachers as well. So we're developing a lot of resources, both to support our families as well as our teachers, in feeling as competent and confident in moving forward in the fall. This summer, our teachers have been doing professional development in social studies, English Language Arts, in science. Our teachers have been developing new ways of delivering this instruction. Also, at our, last week of August, in our opening PD date, we'll also have trainings, again, from our own experts, Brenda Frost and Stacy Wood, will be doing training on trauma-informed instruction and meeting students where they are with their social, emotional needs. We'll also be receiving training on the synchronous cameras that we've been talking about, that will allow students to zoom in and watch classes and sessions, and the use of personal protective equipment, so that all teachers are aware of the protocols around that and keeping themselves and our families safe. Do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
You got one, Rachel.
I'm sorry.
I want to go ahead.
No, the synchronous learning, and maybe this is better asked for, we had had concerns before, so at the high school level, that was going to be with students on screen. Will students be on screen at the middle school level?
So.
Is that true?
I want to clarify a little bit about what we mean on screen. The camera's going to be in the back of the room so that the students themselves will not be featured on screen, it'll be their backs. But what we mean by that is that the teachers will be able to see their faces on screen so that they can interact with them. So that will be the same technology in the middle school as well. The teacher will be able to see if the student wants, who's zooming in remotely, wants to participate or say something or that kind of thing. They'll be able to see their faces on their screen. But when we talk about the actual visibility of the students, it'll be from the back of the room.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's someone in technology who'd like to add anything to that or correct me, feel free, that is my understanding.
April's going to clarify.
Did you revert back to your instructional?
I know, right?
So the recommendation from the vendor is that it's a mobile unit, so it looks similar to a flat screen on a cart, and that you would remove a desk in the back row, and that would sit there, and the professor, or the teacher could be talking, looking up, engaged with students, just like they were sitting out there before. The frame can follow the teacher, so as the teacher goes and works around the room, the camera is focused in on the teacher. In addition, there is a component to it where if for some reason you need to cut the video or audio feed, you can do it at the touch of a button. So that's in there as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
But at the.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Paul.
And April, this technology, when will it be available? Do you have it already?
It's still in stock. I communicated with a vendor today and was communicating with Mr. Higgins and Mrs. Cormon Rosos to pro, ah, sorry, I just butchered your name, I didn't mean to. Cormon Ramos, to get the order processed. So we're in process of that right now.
Okay. So you think it'll be available by the?
It is still available when I spoke to the vendor for the units we needed to order.
You think we'll have it by the time school starts?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So the interaction isn't at the middle school level?
It's the same equipment district-wide.
Okay.
We're purchasing the same equipment for classrooms across the district.
Okay.
Even for K-4, where it's not intended to be part of that, we're going to have that technology because one of the things that we see coming forward is there are vast opportunities for remote learning of this nature.
Yeah, I guess my question was, at the high school level, maybe I misunderstood Dan, so that's very, I'm sure I did. There's, it's not, they're not able to, those kids that are synchronous in their home, they're not able to interact with the class?
No, they are. They are, yes.
So will the class that's in-person see the kids that are home? Like we're mentioning the dress code and where they need to sit.
And the way that they, the recommended setup is that the students are here, then that display is here. They'll be able to hear the students, and if they turn around, they'll be able to see the screen, it'll look like our Zoom screens.
Yep, okay.
Just like that.
And so same at middle school? That was the question, I guess, I'm sorry.
The devices we're ordering are preconfigured for Zoom, and we did that for the breakout rooms and the whiteboard features.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rachel?
Thank you, Rachel.
I would like to, I would like to take a couple of minutes to talk about childcare. In previous meetings, we had talked about conversations I've been having with Director Peter Faragor of the YMCA. In a conversation earlier today, what we've determined is with space at the Moore Center for a combination of childcare, and also space in which children who are on remote days, who require childcare, can access their programs, we think we can have, with appropriate spacing, up to 100 spaces or slots at the Y Center, excuse me, at the Moore Center. Do not have an actual cost on it yet, but Mr. Faragor's thinking that it would be relatively affordable, and it would be a case where the payment would be per day, not on a per-week basis. So, you know, if you're a family who is looking at that as a potential option, you know, if your requirement is two days during that week, the billing would be for two days, not for the entire week. So there are still some details to be worked out on that, but it's encouraging news that there may be that many slots available for families, and that's students in grades K through eight.
And Dan, any possibility of offering financial support for families that would need it?
That's one of the questions that Mr. Faragor and I talked about today. And one thing that we need to look at is whether or not any of the CRF funds may be available to support that program in any way. Those funds have some specific guidelines that are specifically COVID-related, and I think that's the barrier that we would have to look at. As Mrs. Cormon Ramos finishes the application that we have to submit, and this is news I just got this afternoon, a question I got this afternoon, we're going to have to look and see at, if, first of all, if we have funds available, because we've expended a lot, you know, we're using those funds not just for this technology that we were just talking about, but to provide the opportunities for teachers to have planning time, to also provide equipment, materials, books, so that students who in regular times, normal times, might share a textbook from one period to the other, can have their own. Or manipulatives for students who may have to do some of their work at home instead of, remotely, instead of in the classroom. We're looking at using those funds for a variety of those purposes. But yes, there is a possibility to help support that. But to me, I think that's promising news.
Can I ask a question on that, Dan?
Sure.
Has there been any discussion about whether the Y can accommodate students who might need to do that synchronous learning, like the, with Wi-Fi? I'm just picturing a demand. If there's students that are able to, but they're in that setting, would it be set up so they could be doing remote learning?
That's been part of our concept. Now, I don't know, I'm going to look at a former IT director, maybe she knows. I don't know what the Wi-Fi capabilities are at the Moore Center. I believe that, I don't know, I believe they may be part of the city's Wi-Fi, and if so, I think that's a fairly strong piece, so that would be a possibility. So if I'm a grade six student, if I'm a grade six student, and the connection is solid enough, then yes, that's a student who could potentially zoom in.
Yeah, I would agree. The network was set up by Jason and Nate in collaboration with the Y, and it's fine. We've hosted meetings there before through Apple with video and haven't had any issues. Thank you.
So Mrs. Thomas, as far as the, oh, sorry, any other questions on that? As far as the presentations that we have from our administrators, you know, we have several other areas of our planning group, you know, transportation, food services, facilities, maintenance. In great part, the remainder of their work is dependent upon the number of students that we're going to have remote, the number of students that we're going to have in the hybrid model. So they do not have new information to provide tonight, however, they are here via Zoom phone to answer any questions that people may have. And if there are no other questions of the folks who are already here, I think the next piece is to make a recommendation to the board before you go to questions. So with the presentations tonight, in recognition of the fact that there is still work to do, you know, if you hear what our administrators and planning group members presented this evening, you can see clearly that a significant amount of work and time and consideration has been placed on using the information that we had as far back as last spring, with the way things were going with remote learning, with the work that was done with our staff members the last six to seven days of the school year after we stopped construction, information from the surveys, information from personal communications from families, parents, students even. They've put a lot of time and energy and consideration into the presentation they did this evening. But in recognition of that, and in recognition of the fact that there is still work to be done with regard to some of the logistical pieces, on behalf of the committee, the recommendation for the board is that you authorize or approve the reopening of Ellsworth School Department schools based upon the hybrid instructional model that was presented at this meeting. And certainly, members of the planning group who are here in person, who are also here via telephone, are available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Brenda, do we need to have a motion to extend the meeting time?
I think by policy, your procedure is, it's not a motion, it's a consensus of the board.
Okay, yeah.
So you have four members here, obviously, and Abby Miller is there.
Yep, I'm here.
So you would just need to see if there's a consensus of the board, extend past 8:30.
Yes. Is there consensus that we go past 8:30?
Yes.
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 Abby? May we go past 8:30? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need a motion before we discuss this, or should we go through the questions that I know that Paul's got?
That's up to the board. If you were talking about just questions from board members, the proper procedure would be a motion in a second, then your discussion. But you've got public comment, you can take it either way. It's in the purview of the board.
There's.
I'd like to listen to the questions and have those parent questions answered before we make a motion for this personally.
I agree. Okay, fine. Mr. Marposian?
Yes, so I have quite a few questions and comments, as you might imagine. What I've tried to do is aggregate the questions that are the same or very similar, and list the people who posed them, and so I'll start with those. So question about, there's been several questions about why we can't go to full return to school, given the three-foot rule that CDC has recommended. So questions from Alicia Briggs, Joel Horn, and Kelly Casey, I think there might be some others who touched on it. And there's a, I guess, a mention that the, that the CD, that we're, it seems like we're going with a stricter set of guidelines or protocols than what's been recommended by the CDC. And also, related to this, has our school physician giving us guidance on this? And there's a mention also that Bangor is open for all students to return. So all these were related parts of these questions from these.
I'll address the three-foot, six-foot piece.
Yeah.
I mean, I know there's still some confusion out there. The recommendation for this evening is based upon the requirements that are listed in the Department of Education's framework, to maintain a six-foot spacing with an allowance to no less than three feet. Maintaining six foot gives you the opportunity to get to three feet if you need to, if you can't meet other requirements of the health and safety requirements. So this model and the capacity of the buildings that we calculated are based upon that language. So that is the proposal that's in front of the board. Certainly, the board can take different action on that, can amend that, but that is how this proposal was put forward. It's not based on a philosophical preference, it's not based upon anything else, other than health and safety of all of our students and all of our staff. I think the other question that's related, and I know that our nurses are listening in tonight, is what communication we've had from our school health consultant, Dr. McGregor. So I would ask either Chris or Jackie if they would like to weigh in on their conversations there. I know they've been actively involved with him.
Yes, this is Chris. We have been speaking to Dr. McGregor about once a week, and he's aware of the proposal and is in favor as it's suggested.
As far as Bangor, my understanding of Bangor, and again, I just give this for information because, you know, Bangor is different than us. One of the things that Bangor has is a number of older schools, and when your older schools were constructed, you often had classrooms that were larger square footage than what are being constructed now. You know, if you look at Ellsworth High School, and you look at Ellsworth Elementary and Middle School, classroom sizes would be smaller than some of those. But my understanding of Bangor is, they took the same approach that we did in Ellsworth School Department by doing a survey to see if they could accommodate choice for all families who wanted remote, hybrid, or five-day instruction. And based on the results of their survey, they were able to accommodate all of those choices. I only wish that we could have done that here. To me, that would have resolved many of the issues that we have.
I have a question. Are we not going to cover each question as stated? So you're going to lump together, like you've said?
Where possible, I'll try to do that because in the interest of time, I'm going to, and I'll try to do a good job of presenting the, what's in those questions.
Okay.
But we could easily be here for two hours.
I understand, yeah.
Just, just.
But I think that's what's important, is these people's voice are heard as they intended too.
Yeah, well.
The other piece that I was reading about is that once we provide breakfast and lunch for our students in the classroom, once they remove their mask, it has to be at least six feet distance between students.
That is correct.
So if we went to three feet or less than six feet, then we've got an issue with our lunch program and our breakfast program. And this document that I found, the pre-K adult ed public ed health guidance, several times it says, "School should aim for six feet of distance between students where feasible." And it should be six feet of distance between an adult and students, and between two adults.
Yeah, I think.
I think the thing that's hardest, as a former teacher, I know in my heart that everybody thinks they're going to walk through the door, and it's going to be comparable to how they left in March, and it's not. There is no way it can be comparable to what, the interactions at a distance with a mask on, it's going to be very, very different, and it's a hard pill to swallow. It breaks my heart. But when you sit back and you look at the safety of our staff and our students, we're doing what's right.
Questions about the maroon and gray groups and how students will be assigned. Questions are related to, will siblings be in the same color groups, and will families be able to choose a color group based on if they're collaborating with other, another family or families in terms of childcare and helping with remote learning? So Michelle Cody asked about siblings, Anna Pasarakas asked about the collaboration with other families, Michelle Houston, Melissa Kaufman, and Tara Young all weighed in on this question as well.
I think the easy part of that is the first question, which is siblings.
Yeah.
When we said earlier in the presentation that our software is set up to separate students into groups. into groups by household, households, the way our system is set up on Infinite Campus includes all members of that family, so siblings would be included in that. With regard to the other question, you know, we did mention this at a previous workshop, if there are families who know they're going to be in remote or know they're going to be working together, let our staff know. One of the challenges that we have, and we did talk about this in the planning group, because I got a couple of questions over the past several days since the workshop, you know, are we going to be able to honor special requests? One of the challenges is, we want to have the information on students and get them into maroon and gray groups by the end of this week so that families can know, so that their planning can take place. As much as we'd like to honor every single request, I don't know that we're going to be able to. So, I know with our administrators, anybody else like to weigh in on that? Again, one of the things we talk about with students is we want to be as equitable as we can, and I think we need to try to be as equitable as we can across the board. But certainly, if there are those specific questions, have those parents reach out. It may be something that could work. But again, I don't think we could sit here tonight and guarantee that we could honor every request. That's a great question.
Yeah. Some questions about facilities and how we can expand our capacity. So, several questions about if we could acquire temporary pod buildings to accommodate all the families opting for full return. A version of this question came from Samantha Clark, Tina Porter, and Gwen Clark. Also, Amanda Steinbeck asked if we could use the gym for classes. Krista Little Sebold asked if we can have outdoor classrooms, and mentioned that there's at least two organizations that she knows of who could provide help, provide help with that. Paige Steele asked if, on the assumption that high school students may do better at remote learning than middle and elementary students, if we could use, expand into the high school for EEMS into their classes and have high school students do more remote, maybe just one day a week in person. So, those were all those questions about expanding our facilities and to accommodate more.
I will take some of those, and certainly, there may be some of our administrators who would like to weigh in on some of them. First, with regard to the gymnasiums, yeah, we did look at, what are the larger spaces in our schools that we might be able to use to accommodate more students? One of the things, remember, gymnasiums is, gymnasiums still need to be used for physical education classes. You know, we have two full-time physical education teachers at the high school, two and a half at the middle school. Those programs are important, so that's really not an option to expand classroom space. With regard to bringing in portable units or things of that nature, we're looking very hard at our current custodial and maintenance staff. Bringing in additional spaces would require potentially additional staffing to support those spaces, but also, it's additional square footage for Chuck Turnbull and his crew to clean. So, that's extremely difficult to do, so that is not an option that we are looking at doing. The other piece is, with regard to expanding spaces in the building, we still have to account for student movement throughout the building. As you heard our administrators say, we're trying to limit movement throughout the building to the extent possible, but there is still going to be some. With the capacities that we're talking about, that's designed and incorporated into that so that it allows that type of movement as necessary. I don't know if I've answered all the questions, and again, I would look out to our folks in the audience here, or people, administrators through Zoom. If you'd like to add to that.
So, Mrs. Clifford and I have also been exploring some of the options of using outdoor spaces classroom, but I can tell you from the middle school perspective, that movement is really important for those kids, and being able to provide those breaks that they need. And so, that's going to require a lot of space. We're also taking into consideration of other things, like when you talk about eating lunch in a classroom, you have to think about allergies, and we may need to use other spaces in order to do that, and sanitizing those spaces after. So, we really are trying to utilize all of our spaces, and I think we will be utilizing all of our spaces with this hybrid model, no matter what. So, I think it'll be a challenge, even with the hybrid model, to make sure we're keeping kids adequately spaced and safe. But we are looking at utilizing outdoors as much as we can. We do live in Maine, the weather is often unpredictable. One day it could be 95, and next it could be 35, you don't know. So, I think that's kind of my perspective in terms of middle school, how we're going to utilize all of our extra spaces.
I can just add something else, if that's okay.
Yes.
As far as, there's two minds on this one about using the high school space for elementary and middle kids, because although high school and middle school kids can be home alone, and they can mostly stay safe on their own, I think as we consider the social and emotional needs of all children, we really feel that all children need as much face time in school as possible. Whereas, one child may be able to be alone at home, it may not be the best thing for their emotional health, and without their emotional health, they're not able to learn. So, I think that we've been trying to think in, as equitably as possible, so that all children would have access to being near others, having in-person contact with others, and being able to have that access to schools. So, that is one of the reasons that we decided not to spread out to other schools, so that each child had equal access to having in-person education.
That's also consistent with the results of the survey. You know, we had 80% roughly across the district of families who wanted their children in person. So, we're looking at that concept of equity and trying to make sure that that is in place. I'll defer to Mrs. Clifford, and then I do have another piece to add that touches on transportation.
I just wanted to add, too, Mr. Higgins, is that when we were trying to make the choice work for parents where they wanted remote or in-school, we looked at every inch of our buildings. We walked around, we measured conference rooms, we measured libraries, we measured meeting spaces, we measured gyms, we did everything, teacher rooms, we looked at every possible space, and we weren't able to accommodate the choice model at all. I just think that that needs to be said.
Thank you, Mrs. Clifford. Another piece with regard to the number of students, you know, if you've heard Transportation Director Saunders speak, and I don't remember which meeting it was, but based upon the numbers of having all students in school, he was looking at the potential of having three or possibly, I think it was two or three, or three or four possible bus runs in the morning and the afternoon, and certainly, that would wreak havoc on any academic schedule, be it in-person or remote.
Okay. Question about sports from Chris Popper. If, assuming that fall sports are going to be happening in some way, can remote-only students participate in sports?
Yeah, I would address that. The answer is yes.
Okay.
If fall sports are to happen, then students who are participating in a remote program would be able to be eligible for those activities.
A question about meals, a couple of questions. Can kids bring their own lunch? That's from Mary Dugan. Will meals be provided for remote learners? That was from Chris Popper. And then Karen Merrill asked about allergies. How will food allergies be addressed with children eating in classrooms?
I'm going to defer to our nurses with regard to the allergy question, but as far as students bringing their own cold lunch, yes. As you heard our administrators say, students who bring their belongings are being asked to bring only what they need on the in-person days. So, if they're bringing their own cold lunch, they'll bring it and they'll keep it with their belongings. As far as remote families, the answer is yes. If you think back to last spring, it seems so far ago, yet not so far ago, our food service staff, transportation staff, and some of our ed techs provided two programs. One was a pickup program where families could come to a designated location. We started out at Rennie's, and then when we deemed eligible at the schools, we moved that program to our schools so families could come and pick up a meal. But we also had the grocery delivery program. Conversations with Director Daley are that we will be looking to continue on any or all of those models. And Mr. Daley, if you're on this evening, I think you are, please feel free to add to that, if there's anything you'd like to add. I know he's in a space where his connection may not be good. And as far as the allergy question, I would talk to either Chris or Jackie.
This is Chris. That actually is something that we're discussing. I was communicating with Mrs. Clifford today about that, so we're looking at our options, and we don't know the exact answer yet.
Before I go on, I just want to mention that Jen asked about reading the full question. I also got a comment from Dale Hamilton, our, on the city council, who very helpfully cited that under public meeting, rules regarding public meetings, proceedings under the state of emergency requires reading comments as presented to provide accurate representation just as an in-person meeting. So, and I was, there's a bunch of questions that I didn't feel that I could summarize, they were too specific. But, for instance, this next question is about Monday holidays. How, with the schedule that we suggested, and with Monday holidays in the calendar, will the Monday, Wednesday, any students who are assigned to Monday, are they going to miss out on some learning? That question was submitted by Jen Beal and Monica Andrews. So, for questions like that, I think, I feel comfortable reading them, summarizing that way, because the gist of it is pretty simple to do. I will read the full questions of one, that are, that have more to them, and I hope that I'm not, I hope that I'm not.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, let's just, let's just back up a second. I believe that what Dale Hamilton just said is that they cannot be summarized. They have to, to meet the requirement, each question has to be read verbatim.
Okay. I also know that the chair has the responsibility to limit questions during public participation in the interest of time and interest of managing the meeting, so having been assigned this role by Mrs. Thomas, I felt like that, that, this procedure that I've been following is, aligns with that policy of ours. It's in our board policy. But I'm happy to read every single question that I've got here if, if that's the consensus of the board and the advice of.
To answer the question you just asked with regard to the Monday holidays, the Monday holidays occur whether you're in a normal situation, or in a remote, or in a hybrid, what will happen is, on those holidays, the students who are in in-person programming will not have their in-person day, the students who are in remote programming will not have their instruction that day. I think the balance to that is, when you look at the number of instructional days over the course of the year, they will balance out that students will get the same number of remote days and in-person days.
Okay. I'm going to go down to the bottom of.
Wait, 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 let's, I have some concerns about some of the questions that were already asked.
Yep.
So, going back to the food allergies, you know, I'm a person who has life-threatening food allergies. I would kind of think that we need to get some of those questions really nailed down here. If we're going to be eating in classrooms, but there's going to be people coming kind of back and forth, is anybody else going to have access to that desk where that child is sitting? Is there any chance that somebody else is going to sit down at that desk with, you know, like, I'm definitely allergic to tofu and soy milk. If somebody sits down on that desk, spills some of that on that desk, and then I come back later, that would be a massive problem for me. What do we have, what, how do we know that that's not going to be a problem in this situation?
This is Chris again. Yes, that's exactly the situation that we're trying to consider and figure out. We just don't know the best answer yet. But we recognize that when kids are taking their lunches to the classroom, that it's not going to be the same scenario as when they were in the cafeteria, then leaving that area completely and allowing it to be cleaned. So, again, we're just trying to figure that piece out.
Okay, but appreciatively, we are being asked to vote on something tonight, and we kind, and we, we need some answers to some of these big questions. Can we, without knowing the answers entirely, can we be sure that we're going to have a plan in place 12 days before school starts that says we are not going to have a problem with cross-contamination for food for people with life-threatening allergies?
There will be a plan in place, Abby, yes. Based on the conversations, if you look at what we do in normal times, in the lunchrooms with students with allergies, you'll need to follow a similar model to ensure that there is no potential for cross-contamination for those students. I think what Mrs. Reineck is saying is, they haven't got the specific answer as to how that's going to happen, but there will be an answer in place. And again, I agree. It would be nice to know all the answers this evening. One of the things that's on your agenda tonight is to start the student year on September 8th instead of September 1st. So, I'm fully confident in the medical professionals that we have on our staff, working with the principals and the food service people, that that will be an issue that is addressed so that there is safety for those students.
Great.
I wish I had a better answer for you, Abby, but that's, we will have an answer.
All right, from Beth Altteri, if your child has to do fully remote learning, does that have any impact on who they have as a homeroom teacher? And she says her two sons are in third grade and sixth grade, and I would hate to, I would hate to see them be segregated.
So, for your third-grade student, the answer is yes, there are designated remote teachers. So, if the teacher assigned to her child is not a remote teacher, then there will be some shifts happening. There's a process that we outlined for this today in the K-4 leadership team. What's going to happen is, we're going to contact and verify all remote students. We're going to put them in a homeroom assigned with a remote teacher. Based on those, we're going to shuffle some students, hopefully not many, because they've already been communicated with their teacher. If we have to shuffle students, parents will get a phone call directly from me about the change. We're hoping not to do that, much of that, but we are going to have to change some students as some, some teachers are remote-only teachers. So, there will be some shifting in the K-4 level, yes. On that same note, what about the K through 8?
The 5 through 8, the homerooms will stay the same. So, if you've been assigned to a homeroom by now, or either today or tomorrow, you should have received a letter from your homeroom teacher welcoming you into their homeroom, and those homerooms will stay.
Thank you.
Another question from Beth Altteri, if a student is unable to wear a mask for health reasons, are they going to be separated from the rest of their class? Is a doctor's note even an option for children in that situation?
Yeah, with regard to that question, if students have a medical issue or behavioral issue that makes it difficult, prevents them from wearing a mask, an alternative is a face shield. But I'm not aware of any discussion of separating those students from the group. There is a face covering that's required, it's either a mask or a face shield, and yes, we're looking at having a doctor's note for the medical pieces. But I think, as we talked about in one of our previous meetings, one of our parents sent a message in, or a question in, asking about a specific situation for their child that seemed to be a common sense issue, and we're going to have to make some judgments along the common sense lines to allow for a face shield as opposed to a mask.
Okay.
Real quickly, about the mask, are neck gaiters considered masks for you guys?
I know our school nurses are working on some information to provide to families on what is an acceptable face covering, so I'm not sure where they are in that particular process, so I'm going to defer to them, Abby.
Okay.
This is Chris. From what I understand, we are considering neck gaiters as acceptable.
Okay.
From Kelly Casey, who are the planning group members?
We have myself, all of our building principals and directors, our maintenance director, our facilities director, our food service director, transportation director, special education director, curriculum instruction and assessment director, business manager, our two school nurses, and that group is the formal group that's recognized in the Department of Education's framework as the structure. But that group, as you've heard this evening, has also worked with working subgroups, other staff members, and other resources. You know, for example, our school nurses are working with Dr. McGregor on a regular basis. They're also working directly with the Department of Education's school nursing group. Group. And that's similar with many of our other people.
Okay. One of the questions I referenced earlier from Joel Horn, my question is this, why can schools as large as the Bangor School System go full five days a week and we cannot? But we want to fail our children with in-home online schooling that works for no one. The surveys went out, and a vast majority of them want to return to school. Why do we not follow, bother? The CDC recommended three-foot social distance and allow our children to go to school like most Ellsworth taxpayers have asked for.
I think as far as Bangor, we, we talked about that earlier. You know, Bangor is the Bangor School Department. My understanding is, they are accommodating a choice model where they will have some students in school five days a week, some students in school in a hybrid scenario, and some students participating fully remotely based purely on family choice. As far as the Ellsworth School Department and the six-foot, three-foot piece, I answered that question earlier. The, the guidance and the requirements say six feet. Mrs. Thomas has a document from the Department of Ed that says the aim is for six feet with an allowance for a minimum of three. Again, that's what's in the proposal here. And certainly, the board and their deliberations can determine to make a change to that. With regard to failing our students, I think we all acknowledge, remote learning had its successes last spring. It also had its challenges. But I think if you listen to our administrators speak this evening, the issues that we had with remote learning last spring, the challenges that we had, have been addressed through a very thorough process of work with their staff members, with their teachers, looking at the survey results, looking at the data. So that remote instruction this year, whether you're a family that selects full remote instruction, or a hybrid model, or in that model where you have remote instruction a couple of days a week, the remote learning experience is going to be vastly different and more clearly defined than it was last spring.
Can I add to that and ask a question, please? Did we ever, did the planning committee ever entertain the idea of that same model that Bangor has chosen where it was a choice of in-person, hybrid, and remote?
Nope. What we looked at, because we, we knew what the capacity was for our buildings, was a model whereby if enough family, choice based upon full remote or a hybrid, okay? And if we could accommodate enough families with full remote, we might be able to have all of the other families who wanted in-person to be there five days a week. So we, we went at it in a very similar fashion. I don't know the nature of Bangor's survey.
Right.
What we were hoping to do, Jen, was if we had enough families, and we received some feedback, and again, and I mentioned earlier in the meeting, I had a lot of families reach out to me personally where we had these conversations. I know a number of families who were talking about wanting to do full remote for a variety of reasons. What we were trying to do was, if we had enough families based upon our survey results who wanted full remote, and that permitted us to safely put the remainder of our students in school five days a week, we would absolutely have gone that way.
So I guess the confusion really is, is that when we asked that, that second survey that was, do you want in-person or remote? I think where some of the confusion is coming from is, parents didn't know what they were choosing at that point, because we were not clear until August 3rd that our consideration was, was hybrid. That was sent prior to that. And so, you know, maybe that's what's, what's happening, is that there's parents who are still, well, maybe now, because we had a presentation tonight. But seeing other districts going at three feet is, is concerning for parents, because it's not just Bangor. And again, we don't know square footage, and we don't know all of those, those pieces of information for different schools are, I'm sure vastly different. But the clarification with the three-foot and moving about the classroom does become a question for parents because RSU 9 had posted, and very clearly in their description in the news, that they were going at three feet. So I'm just curious, if they're, if other school systems are giving that consideration, then they must be coming up against those same questions or same issues too, about moving about the classroom. So I think that's where a lot of the parent concern is coming from, is we, we may, you know, we're making a statement saying, at three feet, we can't safely move about the classroom. And so then that question comes from parents. Well, then how is everybody else making it work? Because they're, they're clearly stating that they're going to go at three feet.
And I can't answer why another district is doing that, Jen.
I know. But I'm going to guarantee you, that's why we're getting as many questions as we're going to get on that.
I, I, I'm certain that that is the case. And again, with regard to Bangor, I know I saw a picture in the newspaper about Bangor's classrooms, and the desks in the picture they showed were not three-foot desks. I don't know if Bangor's going with three feet or not.
I don't either. RSU 9 has stated they are, so I think it's the difference of...
I, I think the piece for us is, you know, I, I stated clearly that this, this is not some personal preference of Dan Higgins. This is what I'm looking at in the requirements that are there, okay? And I'm looking at, the six-foot is where it is. I'm also listening to what our school nurses and...
Correct.
...school health consultant is talking about, that six feet with an allowance for as no less than three feet. It's not just movement in the classroom, but movement in other areas of the school. It's other spaces in the school. There are going to be places, for example, depending upon who you stagger your hallways. Down a hallway at Ellsworth Elementary Middle School, hallways are not wide enough to permit six foot, six feet of spacing. It's a short time when the kids may walk by each other.
Correct.
Those are the types of things that are part of this. But I would also stress, as, as the board considers and makes a vote, you know, you've got components of the plan, the recommendation of the committee is there, certainly that can be amended. But, but I would acknowledge, yes, that may be a source of confusion for, or confusion or frustration for many families.
Another question from Joel Horn, I'm just going in order here. Why has our school doctor not attended one school board meeting or answered directly one question from the actual school board? Why are we taking the advice of only the school nurse and not the CDC-recommended return for a full five-day return?
I can't answer why Dr. McGregor hasn't been here, but our school nurses are meeting directly with Dr. McGregor, who is the school health consultant as required by state law. He advises them. And we are abiding, and it's a difference of perspective. We are abiding by the CDC requirements. Based on the conversation that I just had with Jen, there are some differences on that. But again, I would go back to the piece. And I would also say, there's nobody in this room or anywhere in this community that does not want to see all of our kids back in school. Bottom line is, health and safety of all of our students and all of our staff.
Next question, or set of questions from Gwen Clark, has the school checked into getting pods to place on the school grounds to accommodate the extra students allowed by state educational mandates? These would be temporary. Why, if all counties are green with the COVID, have these guidelines been set in place? What is the guarantees that students attending have been COVID-tested if they're using the excuse, "Results of tests are HEPA-protected"? Is Ellsworth prepared to provide the numerous counseling that these children need due to the previous and current setups for learning? The MPA is allowing sports to continue. What other extracurricular activities are going to be allowed in the schools on all levels? Why not have teachers move room to room rather than students for classes? Should other schools be able to provide more person-to-person teaching? Does school choice come into play for Ellsworth students?
It's a lot of questions.
It is.
You might have to start from the top and go with just a couple at a time.
I don't remember the first one. I think the question about pods, and we talked about adding additional spaces outside, one of the challenge, two of the challenges. One is, you're still looking at your logistics of food services, you're still looking at your logistics of transportation. But you're also looking at the capacity of our custodial and maintenance staff to clean and disinfect those spaces. So we're not looking at doing that.
And all counties are green, so why are we having these restrict, these, if, why if all counties are green with the COVID, have these guidelines been set in place?
And I think that comes back to what we've talked about in previous meetings that I just touched on in my presentation tonight. The green designation is one component that you have to look at. A green designation means that it's advisable to start with in-person instruction, but only if you can meet all of the health and safety requirements. And as we've discussed at length here tonight, and also in previous meetings, we're not able to do that with all of our students in the school.
And the next part of her questions was, what is the guarantees that students attending have been COVID-tested if they're using the excuse, "Results of tests are protected"?
There, there is no guarantee. And right, right now, there is not a recommendation for testing program for students or staff to come back to school.
Next part of her question was about counseling.
I think Mrs. McKeever-Murphy talked about the resources that we have in place, and the number of ways in which families or students can access the services and resources that we have. Certainly, Mrs. McKeever-Murphy could provide another answer to that. Or, is this from Mrs. Clark?
Yeah.
Certainly have her reach directly out to Mrs. McKeever-Murphy as, as she offered.
Yeah. And other extracurricular activities, are they going to be allowed in the school?
Activities that are sponsored directly by the school department. Our plan is to continue with those activities in accord with the health and safety guidelines. With regard to interscholastic athletics, right now, the MPA has a plan to start their fall season on September 8th. But based upon conversations, conversations I've heard, I don't know that that is etched in stone. I think that's their plan right now. I do know that the Principals Association and the main interscholastic athletic administrators association are stepping back because they recognize that the first and foremost priority that we have is determining how we're going to return students to school academically. But I would also support that by saying, it is my hope that we can return to not just full in-person instruction, but full co- and extracurricular activities. We all know how important those are to students, to staff, and to our community. And Ellsworth is a community with a rich tradition of co- and extracurricular activities for students. We have students who perform, compete, who do wonderful things, and have gone on to wonderful careers. I think we all want to see that come back.
Why not have students, teachers move room to room rather than the students for classes?
I know that's conversations the principals have been having at the, at their building level. Principal, would you like to address that?
If we had every student have the same schedule, you know, that would be easy to do, but, but we don't. You know, you have a English class of 20 kids, and when the bell rings, five may be going to PE, and five may be going to science, and five may be going to math, and five may be going to art. You know, so it's, it's scattered. So at the high school level, we couldn't do that. We did look at it, but there's no way we could do it.
And I would add to that by saying, you know, part of the plan is to, our maintenance custodial staff again, to clean and disinfect throughout the day.
Yeah. I might add to that, too, that at the high school level, it brings normalcy. So the kids, you know, when they're going to their classes, and they're, you know, they're moving about the school, not only are they getting some movement in, but it's a sense of normalcy. It's, you know, they're going to their teacher that they saw, you know, previously, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Again, the bottom line is, making sure that we can put in place a precautions to prevent any potential transmission.
And I will say that we did have conversations about that at the middle level, but we really feel like we needed to provide students with those movement breaks. Those are critical for middle school students. And to echo what Jen said, it does provide that sense of normalcy. You know, when you come into your building, it's similar to the suggestion of moving, having high school go remote and moving kids from elementary and middle school up to the high school. That's a little bit unnerving. We have to, to consider that these students have not been in a school building for, what, five and a half months maybe by the time we get back. And this is what they're familiar with. This is like their second home. And so this is what they know. They know the knicks and crannies of our buildings. So I think it provides that sense of normalcy and will reduce some of the anxiety that they may be feeling coming back into the building. And it also gives them an opportunity to, to have a, I'm going to use quotes, quote-unquote "normal" day, in a sense, when they're moving from class to class, because that's what they're used to.
Might as well, right, April?
I also think Ms. Gabanelli about lab equipment and tables for that type of work is really important. In addition, one of the things that we got feedback from teachers when we were working on the plan, was that they really needed some time and space in their room to be able to plan appropriately, gather learning materials or manipulatives that had to be sent home. So one of the ways that we thought that we could manage that, as well with the Unified Arts, instead of having them push in, we thought that if we had them see smaller cohorts in their own room, that that might meet both needs.
And also remind everyone listening that we're also practicing the health and safety requirements. So we're doing spacing, we're doing masking. And those are things that are in place not just in schools, but everywhere that we go. You know, you go into the grocery store, you are required to wear a mask, you're required to stay six feet away, those types of things. So the proper precautions are being put into place.
Next question from Kelly Casey. It's one that I referenced earlier in my summary, and I'll read the actual question here. Main CDC and DOE have established a three-foot rule, not a six-foot rule. Quote, "Maintaining three feet of distance is acceptable between and among students when combined with the other measures outlined in this list of safety requirements," unquote. Doesn't your plan require the use of the listed safety requirements? If so, why are you using a standard that is not required by the CDC or DOE? You may have already answered that, but I'll put it out there.
I think the question has been answered in one of the other ones. We are following the requirements that are listed in the Department of Education and CDC documentation. Six feet with an allowance to no less than three feet. We've talked about the reasons why. But I would also say once again, you know, the recommendation before the board is here, and that's something that the board can look at and make a determination on.
From Monica Andrews, can you please find out if the two groups will have equal in-person schooling, given holidays and professional development, et cetera? I'm wondering if Monday and Wednesday group might run into more holidays.
The two groups are equal.
On, on the Monday holidays, or the in-service days, in-service days, I'm trying to think which days we have them scheduled, but as we answered earlier, on the Monday holidays, both the in-person group and the remote group are not going to have instruction that day. But over the course of the year, they will have the same number of instructional days. Whether we can say they're going to be the exact same number of in-person and remote days, I can't tell you that.
But same number of instructional days?
Yes.
From Gwen Clark, what will, what will the funds acquired from the grant application from the DOE that was shared on the school website just today be used for?
Now, I, I'm going to defer to Mrs. Corman-Ramos on that, because there are a couple of grant proposals being done in unison. One of them is the CRF funds, Coronavirus Relief Funds. There's also another grant that Mrs. Corman-Ramos is working on that requires being posted for public comment. Rachel, would you like to address that?
I'd be happy to. There are three grants that we're currently working on. The grant that was posted to the website today is a grant that we do yearly, regardless of pandemic, that is for Title I students, Title II, Title II funds, and Title IV and V. Those are grants that are used for giving students additional help in reading and math, for professional development for teachers, for safety and health of students, mental health of students, incorporating technology into classrooms, and for summer school. Those are Title I, II, IV, and V. That's an application that is done yearly. And those, that grant is posted on the website, and you are welcome to read it, and read the different projects that we are doing in the school. That also supports our outdoor classroom, our gardening programs, a variety of things, robotics. And so that is an application that is, that is posted right now for public comment for five days. And if anyone has any comments about the projects we've written up, you are welcome to email me at rcormenramos@ellsworthschools.org. The other two grants that I'm working on currently, one is called the CRF Fund, which is part of the CARES Grant, and the other one is also from the CARES Funding. One is stopgap funding essentially that we're allowed to use until December 30th of this year. The other one is additional funding that we are allowed to use through a year and a half from now. So we can plan out the immediate needs and the longer-range needs with that additional funding due to the pandemic. So those two, we have discussed, as Mr. Higgins explained. Those are being used for the in-class cameras that we're discussing to support remote learning. Those are being used for additional maintenance necessities, for protective equipment for teachers, for all of our faculty and staff. Those are being used for additional materials, as Mr. Higgins said... and staff. Those are being used for additional materials, as Mr. Higgins said, for that students have their own individual materials, down to different kits in the arts department, so that when students go home every other day, they're able to take on their own set of art materials, to their own pencils and compasses and rulers and calculators, so that our students are going to have their own sets of materials to work on. We'll not be sharing them, and we'll support safe practice. So those are the differences in the funding streams. But the one on the website today is, you are welcome to read it. We ask you to read it, and to send any comments or questions you have about it, so that we can add any of your ideas or edit it as necessary before it's submitted on Friday.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Next question from Michelle Houston. When you call parents this week, will we be able to make a request for which group works best for our families based on our work schedules?
And I think when we answered that question there in the summary, definitely siblings, families, households will be grouped together. While we would like to honor every request to be in one group or the other, can't guarantee that we can do that. I think that's in reference to the fact that there may be some families who are looking at, we have a certain group, we know the bubbles that we've been in. If our kids are remote on the same day, we may have some opportunities to support them. I think we just ask, if families have that situation, let our principals know, but we certainly can't guarantee it, because we have to look at dividing the groups so we can properly space and have the proper number of kids each day. It's a great question and a great concept, whether we could actually guarantee it. I can't commit to that.
I'd like to comment, too, on that, because one of the things that we had talked about before, and I think Dan had mentioned it in our last meeting, was that those parents who had talked about having older kids and younger kids that might be able to help on those remote instruction days, but it also might help with neighborhoods for carpooling to lessen our burden on our transportation, you know, just our busing. So although, like Dan said, it might not necessarily work, we had discussed the geographic component to that, too.
And that's not off the table, but that's a set of logistics. And again, we're looking at a start date. If you folks approve a change in calendar to September 8th, you know, even that, the set of logistics to get the phone calls, to get the information, and I can tell you, the folks who are here tonight and the folks who have done that work, the last time I did the phone calls, did yeoman's work. But it's a challenge to get that information. We want to have it by Friday. Even with Friday, looking at trying to match up all of those logistics is going to extend that time, because that's not something that our software is designed to do. But I guess I would just say, if there are people that have that concern, let our staff know. And, you know, we can't guarantee it. But we can say siblings, households will definitely be grouped together.
Question from Kelly McKenney. It seems to me that instead of Friday being a half day, it would make more sense for Wednesday to be a remote day and be used as a cleaning day. Can you please explain why it was decided to send kids on Friday?
Yep. A couple of things. The remote day did not meet the consensus of the planning group because of a couple of reasons. One, it was the number of days of instructional time that would not be part of this calendar. I mean, when you're looking at what a remote day is, there would be some remote learning activities, but there were a lot of other activities scheduled for that day. The group could not reach consensus to support that much amount of time during the school year that's not devoted to instructional activities. The reason to look at Fridays, again, our cleaning staff is prepared to do the cleaning that is necessary on a daily basis, during the day and after the school day. We looked at Friday because Friday is already a PLC day. It's a day in which students are already dismissed early. We also decided not to have an all-remote day, but to have an in-person day that alternates by week, so that will provide students more opportunities to be in the building.
From Becca Robinson, if both parents have to work, when is attendance taken? On a remote learning day, my child may not be able to sign on until after we get home from work to complete assignments when he has internet access.
It's a great question, and we have at least one of our principals who's going to give an answer.
They're looking for login information, and it's just a check-in. So if you've got a remote day where students or parents haven't logged in or checked in with a teacher, we don't want that to, you know, to continue for several remote sessions. So it would just prompt a conversation and checking in. We really want students and parents and teachers to really work together as a community to best educate the child. So that's what it is when I say take attendance. In person, there'll be attendance on an infinite campus, and if you're tardy or you're late, those phone calls will go out as they always have been. But when you're in remote learning, that won't happen, but there will be a check-in by teachers to make sure that students are logging in and checking in. And if we have one or more missed and there's no communication, we just want to make sure that our students are meeting their needs. And if they're not there, then we need to make sure that we touch base about it. So that's kind of the intent of that, if that makes sense.
Another question from Gwen Clark. If parents have found an outside of EEMS visual learning program, will the Elsworth schools pay for that?
That's not something the school department does.
Okay. From Amy Haller, are kids going to be required to wear masks while in their learning zones? What is the timeframe for wearing masks in school?
The answer is yes, and masks are required at all times during the day, with the exception of scheduled mask breaks or at lunch. One of the things we're looking for additional guidance on is whether or not at recess, with proper spacing, if masks can be taken off. It's something that I'm hoping that the guidance says that we can do that, so it would provide kids with another opportunity. But yes, masks are required all day.
Dan, on that, like what she was asking, is there guidance to say how long students at different age groups can tolerate or should wear that mask with, you know, and then have their break? Is that, should younger kids not, you know, take their break every two hours? Is there any guidance to that?
I'm going to refer to our school nurses, or I would say our principals on that.
Thank you.
I know the guidance is wearing masks on all day, and there's a requirement for mask breaks. Chris, Jackie, do you have any guidance that provides some recommended times?
Hi?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Jackie. The DOE School Nurse Consultant has addressed this. So mask breaks should occur throughout the day and will occur. But she had shared with the school nurses that there is actually no requirement for frequency or length of breaks for the masks. But they should occur, and ideally, they should occur outside, and they can happen when there can be at least six feet between the students.
So ideally, what would we do on the days when we live in Maine and we can't do that? What are we going to do?
I think that's one of the pieces that we've started talking about is, and I think back, you know, Abby has a tent that she was offering to donate to the schools to provide an outside space. That's something we look at. Certainly, that may not address, and let's just say this, let's hope that we're not still having this conversation in the midst of December and January when it's really cold.
Yeah, right.
But I think, you know, throughout the fall, we can provide outdoor spaces. And we actually had the conversation, help me guys, was it Monday, Wednesday, last Wednesday? I don't remember. We talked about providing and getting some tents to provide those outdoor spaces.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just like to add that we have gotten a quote, thanks to Mr. Frosch, for tents for all schools, and have included that in our CRF grant.
Great, thank you.
Next question from Trevor Casey, and the subject line is kindergarten. Who's going to teach the parents how to use these computer programs? How are these children going to log in daily without support?
As I said, it is our plan to implement many more trainings. We have already developed videos to send out to parents, as well as contact names that they can call for additional help. So we have kind of how-to videos. One of the things that I think will help families a lot is that we've limited the platforms that they will need to access. If your children are in kindergarten through third grade, they'll be using Seesaw, and from fourth through 12th, be using Google Classroom. So we have developed and are putting together in one parent platform site on our websites, where they can click on a link and see a short two-minute, three-minute how-to video to get their children all set up. And we're going to set up, you know, office hours for times when families want to give a call and have us help them walk through that.
From Mary Dugan, what does this mean for those special education students that may have specific needs for more assistance than the remote learning program, even for a few days? What happens if a child with or without needs can't wear the mask or shield?
From the guidance that I've received, that's not an option. We're going to have to work to find an alternative to provide an appropriate face covering for that student that meets the health and safety requirements. Was there anything different in the guidance, Mrs. McKeever-Murphy, with regard to PPE? No.
I think that's going to be a big consideration for our school department, because shields are equally as difficult for children, some children, to wear.
Yeah, they can be. And I know districts across the state are struggling with this.
From Katie Klauff, I am the parent of an incoming kindergartner and a second grader. I'm trying to find out if they will be allowed to attend in person for the hybrid model that is being announced. My son, Kay, in kindergarten, is a special needs student who will require the structure of being in person. He has an active IEP that also requires him to have an aide in the classroom. Due to his disabilities, I do not believe he could keep a mask on all day as his anxiety prevents this, but he must be in a structured setting, or else he will regress further than he has since the initial shutdown. As far as my daughter in second grade, she would benefit from the structured environment as the distance learning did not work well with her since the initial shutdown. She could wear a mask if needed, and it would help reduce the risk of exposure to have multiple children from the same household following the same model. Any other information, i.e. first day of school, school supplies, teacher assignments, et cetera, I would love to have. Please feel free to respond to this email with the answers.
I think the answer with regard to the masks is the same as the previous question. With regard to the services and so forth, I think Mrs. McKeever-Murphy covered that in detail. And I wonder if this may be a case where, if there are specific questions, that may be better directed to her. And with regard to the, you know, school supply lists and things of that nature, you know, those are some of the details that we do not have answers tonight. You know, the biggest challenge that we've had is getting to a point where we have a model that we can present, knowing that there are still some of those questions. But as soon as that information is available, you know, it's going to be coming from our schools.
From Vaughn Harmon, how will homeschool students be integrated into classes they choose to attend at either EEMS or EHS? Do they also have the option for hybrid or remote for those classes?
I think that's a great question. If we have homeschool students who want to access programs, they could make the same choices that students who are full-time, full-day students can make. Could be part of the hybrid, could be remote-only, and would be on, if they're hybrid, they would be part of the alternating day schedule.
Okay, this is from Alicia Briggs. If, after you contact each family this week, determining which way they want to go, whether hybrid or full-remote, if there ends up being more choosing full-remote than originally thought from the survey, will you forego the hybrid and allow for all the students that wanted to come back to do so?
You know, Mrs. Briggs, I hope that that's the case, because that's one of the things that we were hoping for earlier on. I think the answer to that question comes once we get that information.
All right. This is from Katrina Westcott. My name is Katrina Westcott, and I have also included my husband, Alvin. We have three children within the Elsworth School Department. I'm not sure if I, I feel uncertain about reading emails that describe a lot of personal information about children. Maybe I can, Mrs. Westcott, if you don't mind, I will forward this email to someone who can answer it directly.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
I think I...
...every morning for application.
This question is from Erica Connors. Will there be pre-K held at EEMS this year?
Our conversations with pre-K are that there would still be a program, and the pre-K program would abide by the same program that the rest of the school department does. I know my last communication with the, our pre-K contact, they were waiting to see what model was adopted, and then they're going to put their plans into place.
This question from Mary Martel, fifth-grade teacher at EEMS. First, thank you all for the time and effort put into this delicate matter. With that being said, I hope that the board is aware of the immense load this places on the teachers moving forward. There is no way to do what we are being asked to do within the framework of our day. Many, many hours will be needed on our personal time. How exactly are we expected to teach in-person kids each day, 7:40 to 2:30, teach remote at the same time, upload necessary materials for remote kids, hold office hours, check in daily with our remote kids, and do our planning? Don't get it wrong, I want nothing more than to teach, she puts in all capital letters. I just do not see how we can do it all and do it well. Thorough cleaning every single night? Do we have the custodial staff? Staffing has been an issue lately. Has that changed?
The custodial piece, yes. We have hired a couple of new staff members. Chuck is close to full capacity, so the required cleaning is going to take place. With regard to the other questions, I'm going to defer to our principals.
So I think that, you know, there's been a lot of consideration and time put into thinking about teachers' workflows and how they manage both in-person and remote, and fully remote. And I think that based on the things that we are trying to offer for staff, all the professional development hours, the extra hours, and collaborating as a team, and Mr. Higgins alluded to the fact that we also are looking at possibly releasing a little bit earlier on the Friday early release. I think all of those things take that into consideration. I think there's also, we haven't been able to get together as a full group of teachers yet to work in teams and to do that work. So I think that that will also come. And the thing that everything, everyone needs to consider, I think, families, students, and teachers, is that this is all brand-new for us. There's no class that we've taken that would prepare us as educators for this situation. It's entirely new. It's entirely unknown, I think, in a lot of ways. And from my perspective, and for the middle school, we're just going to continue to work as a team to do the absolute best for our students. And I'm going to continue to work as hard as I have been and will continue to do to work for teachers and families. You know, there are a lot of unknowns. I think you have to get into it, and I think you have to dig down and kind of get dirty with it to be able to see how it shakes out. And I think that there has to be patience and compassion and kindness as we move through this, because nothing that we have learned as educators in any capacity, whether you have a master's degree, a doctorate, or what have you, have prepared us for these moments. So while I understand that there's concern, there's worry, there's anxiety, we work through all of those. Those things happen on a regular basis, and we're going to work together as a team to make sure that we're doing the absolute best we can for everyone involved. And that's the goal in this. So I think for teachers, like Mary, once we're able to get together and work as a team and go through some of this stuff, and she's able to get in there and do that, and other teachers are able to get in there and do that, and work with kids and families, some of those issues that she's talking about may be resolved, you know? I think it's just going to take a little bit of time, and like I said, a little bit of compassion and patience and teamwork on everybody's part. We're all a team. Everyone's sitting around this table here, everyone out there in virtual land. We're all a team, and we need to work together to do what's best for kids and to keep them safe, and to keep our staff safe as well. And that's the priority. So that's my plan. That's how I'm approaching it. I've talked to my teachers about, you know, chunking things into a certain amount of time, and families, this might be helpful for you, too, just thinking about September to December. How do... How do we plan for this in that small amount of time? You know, working within those confines, to think of it that way. So that's kind of how we're approaching it. I think everyone is going to be considered a first-year teacher, and for those of you who don't have experience teaching, being a first-year teacher is a little nerve-wracking, and the unknown can be quite unbearable. So it's like everyone's a first-year teacher, and I think that that's a difficult thing to consider for some of our veteran teachers. But again, we're in this together, we're going to work together, and we're going to be a team, and we're going to, it's going to be great. It's going to be a great year, and we're going to do what we can for students. So I'm very confident in that, that everybody is here to work for that purpose.
So.
Thank you.
In K4, we're going to have a remote teacher, but we won't have that 5-8. It will be, okay.
Like the remote team. So Mrs. Clifford organized it a little bit differently because she has more teachers that are.
Right.
Teaching remotely, or have a need per se, and that's kind of a personnel issue, so I don't want to dive too far into that, but it's different at the middle school.
Okay.
And at the high school, I believe.
Fine, thank you. Just want to clarify.
From Amanda McLaughlin, sorry if I, I'm sorry if I missed the answer to this already. Will the kids be socially distanced and are wearing masks at recess?
Yes, but we're looking for guidance that may allow us to have certain circumstances where there's space properly, where they can combine recess with a mask break.
Brianna Garrity, my children had some teachers reach out to them and do a great job with the time and resources that were given, but there were, but there were some we never heard from after the shutdown. Their education still didn't compare to if they would have had in-schools education. So looking to continue to grow remote learning for my children, are they going to get the same education they would as if nothing had changed and they were still in school?
One answer that I would give to that, and then I would welcome our principals to chime in, the remote experience from last spring, as we talked about a little bit earlier, did have its challenges, did have its points that did not work well for some families. It also had some points where it did work well. The remote experience this year is going to be vastly different, and there are going to be clear-cut and clearly-defined expectations for communication, for work, for grading, for assessment, for checking in, for office hours, so that will be an improvement. As a personal perspective, in-class instruction is the best that you can get. Remote instruction is not a perfect replacement for that, but based upon what we learned from last spring, what we've learned over the course of the summer, incorporating the feedback, it'll be a much improved experience, designed to meet the needs of the student and help support the student learning. Principals, anything you want to add to that?
Next question from Megan McAlpine. This is Megan McAlpine, I work at EEMS. Some districts have given employees, children, the option of attending school full-time. I'm wondering if that has been considered?
That's not a question that has come up, but one of the things we're looking at is equity. You know, I think this goes back to a question that was asked earlier about consideration of having some of our students in the lower grades attend five days a week spread out throughout the school system. One of the things we've prided ourselves on in this whole conversation is providing equity, excuse me, equity to all of our students. In the same sense that having our upper-middle school kids and high school kids participate in remote learning four to five days a week while our younger kids are all in school in person, while it would be nice to be able to do that, it's not consistent with the results of the survey, and 80% of our families want to have their kids in school. Same thing with staff members, we need to go along with equity. Certainly understand the question, but, you know, it comes down to the equitable experience for all of our kids.
And I will make a comment, I think some of the other suggestions we had received via email earlier, not today, was the concern of our staff. If we're, if their schedules will consistently be Monday through Friday, but their students might be in on Monday and Wednesday and home on Tuesday and Thursday, that the, that becomes a very difficult logistical piece to our staff that they haven't had in the past if they've got school-age children.
It does. I know with some of our staff members, they've already worked with their childcare providers and worked out arrangements, that's a positive. We certainly have the opportunity with the Moore Center. But some of the other pieces, and as Erica said, I don't want to delve too far into it because you may be talking personnel issues, there may be situations where we have teachers who may be able to teach their classes remotely with another adult in the classroom to address some of those issues.
I see.
So that's something that we would certainly consider, but.
So those staff could reach out if they had that.
Yes, that's right. But I would also want to clarify, we can't guarantee that that can happen, but we're certainly open to it.
From Mary Dugan, when will we have our child's high school schedule and when will classes start?
Classes are going to start on September 8th, and I think one of the pieces, Mr. Clifford, come on up, I'll be done by the time you get here. September 8th, one of the things we're talking about at the high school is whether we have the September 8th be the freshman-only day. Are we still going to do that? But that will be when classes start. As far as the high school schedule, I'm going to turn to our high school principal.
Yeah, high school schedules will be going out in a couple of weeks. We held off just because we didn't know exactly what school was going to look like, but in the next couple of weeks, they'll be coming out.
Next question from Alicia Briggs. Do we have any plans for reevaluating? For instance, the first of each month, if the cases have remained low in our area, will we adjust and bring more students back in person?
The answer to that is yes, based upon the information that we receive, and as I referenced earlier, the guidance and expectations and requirements have changed over the course of the summer many times. I would be surprised if that did not continue, but also the color designation and the metrics that are used to calculate that are also changing every two weeks. So the answer is yes. We will reevaluate that. If the health and safety requirements are changed that would permit us to safely, for students and staff, have more of our students back in the building, we will reevaluate and do that. And to give as an aside, I hope that that is the direction that we move so that we can get back to something that is more normal for our students and staff.
That was something that I had given a lot of consideration to as well, because while, I mean, all of these people have gone into so much, the hard work that has come to this plan, that if we considered, and I, you know, whether it is like Alicia's, you know, comment on the first, or in six weeks, or that it allow us that ability to reevaluate and consider this as kind of a soft opening to what could potentially, you know, bring us, obviously, according to risk, and I think that might help our parents ease into what we would all like to see, and that's in-person instruction. So, again, I mean, obviously, this model has been given a lot of consideration, and so it might not be ideal for all of the families involved because they needed that in-person instruction for five days a week, but if we have that ability and we all agree that that consideration could change, and maybe even kind of have a, not state that, but have a guideline that we are willing to go by, a metric per se, that we could.
I guess I would say it this way, Jen, two pieces. One is, as the metrics change, and we've been following them all along, as the metrics change and health and safety requirements change in a positive direction, I think it's incumbent upon us to work with our families and work with our staff to modify what we're doing right now. Part of the planning that we've been required to do is be prepared to make a transition from one model to another.
Right.
So, you know, obviously, the easier transition is going from what we're proposing tonight back to full-person instruction. There's some logistics of getting everybody back there. The more challenging one is going in the direction that none of us want to go. But I think, short of putting an actual timeline on it, I think the first thing we need to do is assess what the guidance is, and honestly, something could come out tomorrow that changes everything that we're presenting tonight and everything you guys vote upon tonight. I hope not, because I appreciate your recognition of the work that these guys and all the planning group members and all the people that they've enlisted to do that work have done. I think we take a look at it, you know, the next time that the color designation comes out, and I don't anticipate it's going to change, is this Friday, I believe. So right now, the piece we have to look at is health and safety requirements.
Okay, so that guidance from the DOE, good lord, the color coding is what is also going to be considered every two weeks? That's what they had mentioned back when they.
They're going to post that designation every two weeks. I think the, you know, as long as we're green, that's one piece, but we have the health and safety requirements, so that's the piece that we need to focus on as those change. But I guess the answer to Alicia's question, yes. And I think, I look out here in the crowd, I think we would all welcome the opportunity to be back with more of our kids in school and all of our kids in school as soon as possible.
So from Valerie Webb, good evening. First, thank you to all the teachers and principals for everything they are doing to get everyone back into school safely. Have a few questions pertaining to what first days of school will look like. As we all know, the first day of kindergarten is a rite of passage for both parents and their children. Will parents of incoming kindergarteners be able to walk their children to their rooms in a fashion that is safe for everyone? Could this be something that is discussed on how it can be done safely? For families who have children who receive one-to-one staffing, will ed techs be waiting at the drop-off for their students where parents are not to escort their children into the building? What will it look like for families?
I'll take the first one, and I completely agree with kindergarten being a rite of passage. Unfortunately, the answer is going to have to be no. Our staff will be equipped to welcome those students into school with the appropriate greeting, positive greeting, and escort them to their first day of school. With regard to the question on ed techs, I'll defer to our special ed director.
I would say that is the most likely scenario to happen. Ed techs typically with a one-to-one student do meet their one-to-one at the door, and I can imagine that that's got to be really difficult because sometimes, especially for the K students, the parents actually do kind of a pass-off, but there's a flipside to that. Sometimes kids do better when they're not necessarily with mom and dad coming in, so I'm honestly not sure how that's going to shake out with the littlest ones, but yes, we would have to have someone meeting them at the door, and it would be the, a one-to-one ed tech or person who could be responsible for taking them to the classroom, absolutely.
Next question from Holly Blazak. How does a scheduled bathroom break look like for a girl on her period?
Seems like a middle school question.
So, it may be high school too, but I think that.
You can take it.
At the middle school, you know, we are very cognizant of that, so we're working, a lot of the wings in the middle school have bathrooms right very close to their wing, so teachers can communicate if a child needs to go to the bathroom in an emergent situation. So that's kind of what we've, what we've put into our plan at this point. Fifth grade's a little bit more challenging because their bathroom is down at the end of the hallway, but that may not be quite an issue for fifth grade yet, so.
I would assume that it would work similar to the high school, and I'm just going to cover that for Mr. Clifford. I'd say case by case needs to definitely come into play there.
There'll be some of that, you know, this, it's a totally unrelated thing, but I can think of years ago in another school I worked in where we had a spate of bomb threats where we had the same situation. We had to close down the restrooms, but there were those emergent situations where we had to make an accommodation, and that's what our staff is prepared to do.
Next question from Andrew Rideout. Hi there. Most college students do not spend a full day online. This plan now has students online on remote days for about seven hours in a row. That's not appropriate for an adult. This is going to create challenges as well with connectivity. If you begin all-day synchronous learning and it's found to be wildly inappropriate with developmental needs of teens, or anyone, will you change this plan? As a parent with a lot of teens, I'm really clear that the idea of them staying tuned in all day like this is slim to none.
Good to hear from you, Andrew. So first, you know, with our schedule, we're looking at our schedule right now because when we dismiss, we're going to have to dismiss by rooms. So instead of having four minutes in between each period, it's probably going to be around six. So if you're remote, then that's a six-minute break before you sign into your next class. Also, you know, some teachers are going to treat that time differently, so it could be a situation where, Andrew, you sign in, attendance is taken, there's new material that's covered, and then students are going to be doing some problems, and you may have, you may be able to sign up and do that work on your own if you don't need the help from the teacher. So I wouldn't say that you are looking at your screen for seven and a half straight hours. There's going to be a lot of breaks in between that time. And with the classes, because they're interactive, it won't seem that long.
I think the other piece that the staff is looking at is, and this may be one of the families, the families that have multiple students at the high school level with limited bandwidth, they may need to be an accommodation made so that they can work out a schedule at home so that students are able to get on, and I think what Mr. Clifford just said, may be able to sign out so that the other student can get on. I think that will address some of that issue also.
Next question from Breeze Odean. Thank you for all the details so far. I have a few questions. Who are the remote teachers for K4? Are they current teachers working in the school or new hires? Two, is there anything being done to help improve the ventilation system in the school? I know some classrooms have very poor airflow and/or cooling. Three, are students in grades five to eight going to special services, PT, OT, GT, in homeroom groups like in K4 or with other students in their grade? And four, what is the plan for finding substitute teachers and will they be trained to follow the safety protocols?
I'll address the ventilation systems. And I know Chuck has a spotty internet connection, so Chuck, if you're there, you can feel free to weigh in. I'll give him a second. If not, I can provide an answer to that question.
Okay.
And with regard to the question of the remote teachers, we'll have Mrs. Clifford look at that. What was the last question, Paul?
Substitute teachers.
Yeah, substitute teachers. With regard to health and safety requirements, absolutely, they will have to follow them, symptom checklist, et cetera. One of the things that we are doing is we're going to have substitutes using CRF funds that we have on-site every day to help in a variety of situations, whether you have a teacher who is out, to help support staff movement through the building, so that there is somebody there every single day. But yes, they'll be following those requirements. I'm not sure Chuck is on, so Chuck Turnbull has worked with our providers, Siemens and Honeywell, for all of our sites, including our adult education site. One of the changes that's been made already is that instead of having our systems tone off at a certain time of night, they're going to run 24/7 to ensure that there's proper air exchange. Also looking at whether or not there would need to be fans to circulate air to the outside. But yes, that's an issue that has been addressed already. Chuck has worked closely with those companies, and those companies are the ones that service our systems on a regular basis. So the other questions were remote teachers K through four and five through eight.
Special services.
Special services.
Can you repeat the question, Paul? I'm not sure what it is.
Sure. Five through eights, or the remote teachers for K4?
Sure.
Who are the remote teachers for K4? Are they current teachers working in the school or new hires?
They've not been assigned yet, but they are all current teachers within the school.
In grades five to eight, special services?
So like I had stated previously, with the hybrid model and this plan, we needed to rework our schedule to make sure that there was equity in the schedule for some of those things. So I can't give a definite answer who they'll be traveling with. The other piece is that, like for GT services or things like that, sometimes those things may be occurring right in the classroom as well for social-emotional pieces to benefit. So I think there'll be a combination, but I can't say right now if it's going to be just the homeroom kids, or if it's going to be kids within the same grade level. We're still kind of working out that detail.
Okay. Question from Holly Blazak. How are bus rides to and from school going to look like?
Right now, the biggest answer to that is contingent upon the number of students who are planning to access our transportation. We won't know that until we have the number of students who'll be attending on each day, but the current guidance that we have with our buses is students are to be seated, alternating seats, alternating aisles. So you start filling the bus by going to the backseat. Student sits in the backseat, you move up one row, move over to, across the aisle for the next seat to be filled, and subsequently up the remainder of the bus. That will put us in a position where we have probably 20, 21 students on a bus. The one caveat to that, and by the way, students are required to wear masks on a bus, is that if you have students from the same family, they may sit in the same seat. We're hearing that that guidance may be changed. We've not seen anything formal yet. As has been the case over the summer, that would require some changes in what the planning is, but that, as soon as we have the numbers, Transportation Director Saunders and his staff will be working that out and determining what the transportation rides are going to look like, and we'll get that information out to parents.
Next question from. Next question from Krista Little Siebold. Any chance someone can explain the cleaning protocol to ease people's concerns? And is there any discussion of using our outdoor classroom? There are at least two organizations that are potentially interested in helping out and creating a space useful to teaching, but we would need to know. Thank you for all you do.
Outdoor classrooms, I think, is something that our staff is already working on. So looking to use outdoor space safely. With regard to cleaning, our staff has gone through training through their vendors. Also, additional training that is coming forth with the materials that we're going to use, the supplies that we're using, hand sanitizer that we're using, cleaning and disinfecting agents that we're using are all approved. We have the SDS sheets. The cleaning will take place throughout the course of the day for the high-frequency touch areas, for the restrooms, and that's one of the reasons that we're limiting the use of restrooms so that his staff can clean those. But there will be a cleaning that is done every day after students and staff depart.
Next question from Eric Marashal. I think parts of it have been answered. Hi, Paul, this may be covered during the meeting, but I was wondering what types of masks will be required? If we're trying to get them used to wearing them, just want to have an idea of what type. I've heard some surrounding communities have specific requirements, where some had looser requirements, where neck gaiters were okay. And I think we said earlier that neck gaiters were okay, right?
You see, Jackie or Chris said that neck gaiters would be okay. You know, we are looking to provide masks to mask-a-piece to students and staff. Certainly, we recognize if families want to provide their own mask. If they have a specific question, contact our school nurses. I know they're working on some information to put out there. But I think that brings up another good point, and I'm glad he brought it up. Now is the time to start working with your children about wearing masks and getting them used to wearing masks.
Yep.
But those questions could specifically be referenced to either Chris Reinig or Jackie Sandun.
Next question from Rebecca Faulkner. Paul, how do school employees drop their children off at 7:30 a.m. and be at work at 7:30 a.m.? Also, how do we have 504 and IEP meetings at 7:30 a.m. if we don't drop our children off till that time? How many bus trips will be made in the mornings and afternoons? I might not be restating this 100%, but it was mentioned teachers getting paid for up to 10 hours over the next two weeks as they prep for this upcoming school year. Is this the case for clinicians and case managers as well?
To the last question, yes. On the hours. With regard to staff members and their children, that's a logistic we'll have to work out at the building level. And I'm trying to think, what was the middle question? Oh, bus rides. I think we answered that. That's going to depend upon the number of students that we identify once we have the maroon and gray groups and the specific number of students who are going to be accessing in-person education.
Next question from Kelly Casey. With regards to the YMCA, do you know how many families might need this resource? Do you know if the families can afford such an option? How can you state that you are confident that this will serve many families when you have no data from families? Isn't there a greater exposure risk with this plan?
And I answered that question earlier by email. What I said, I'm confident that this will provide an opportunity so that many families may be able to access it. As far as the cost and whether they can afford it, that I do not know. I know Mr. Ferriger was talking about trying to find a way to make it an affordable option. There was a question brought up earlier on whether CRF funds could be used to support some of that. Part of what we need to learn is, and again, this is one of the biggest challenges. Childcare is a challenge even in normal times. We can make the spaces available, we can provide the information to families, and try to help support them through our collaboration with the Y to help them access it.
Dan, can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Obviously, K-4 would be our typical age that would need that. Can you go over the enrollment numbers? Like, how many would be in school two days a week? And how many? So in that daycare setting, what's that need going to look like, possibly? Not that every family is going to need.
When you say how many are going to be in school on any given day?
Yes, K-4.
I can give you an estimate. I mean, that's if you split up the capacity and that's the number.
Just on what we went with that enrollment before?
Well, I'll base it on what we took from the prorated survey results. So looking at K-4, based upon what we have, you'd be talking 330 total, so 165 per day.
Could potentially need.
Could potentially be there. And again, that's pending all the phone calls that are going to take place rest of this week.
And then that's not like fifth.
Was that?
It's not like fifth grade, which may kind of run, fifth and sixth kind of run that cusp. I was just curious for.
And there will be families that don't opt to do daycare.
Exactly. Yep, I was just curious where our need was lying.
And there are several other daycare providers in the area that I'm sure are going to be taking some of these students on remote learning days also.
Yeah.
Next question from Amanda McLaughlin. I believe it was answered. How is video streaming the classroom into a remote student's home done without violating the in-class student's privacy?
And I think that was answered earlier. We talked about using a device called an owl, where the microphone and the camera would be trained on whatever sound was, so it would go to a student if they were asking a question. Under this technology that we're using, the camera and microphone is trained on the teacher, not the students. So the FERPA issues should be addressed. April, anything else? Was that pretty?
Next question from Ed and Ann Dam. Please delay sending teachers and students into a building until there is an effective treatment and vaccine against COVID-19. Please know congregate teaching right now. It would be the same as sending them onto the Titanic and knowing full well that they will sink. That was not a question, just a comment. From Amy Atherton. Assuming we select hybrid, when should we expect to hear from the kids' teachers about which group they have been assigned to?
If, and I'll let the principals talk. If we're able to get the information we need by the end of this week and create the groups that we need to have, we should be able to provide that information. If principals have something more specific, please feel free to share.
I mean, yeah, we're going to try to make phone calls after tonight, pending board approval, to decide what's going to happen and then try to make those phone calls that we need to make. And then hopefully, we can get kids into groups and have that information by the middle of next week.
My goal is Wednesday.
Yeah. Sooner, we'll get it to people as soon as we possibly can, but that's the goal.
Next question from Shannon Curtis. I know this topic wasn't discussed today during the meeting time, but I would like to pose it just the same. I'm concerned with the broad scope of symptoms that were previously discussed regarding COVID screening prior to the school day. During last week's discussion, vague symptoms were included, itchy eyes, runny nose, et cetera, that will disallow a student from coming to school if the student or their family member have any of these symptoms. I'd like to know where these guidelines were developed as I have scoured the CDC website and cannot find the specific contraindications to attendance.
I will answer that initially, but I would also welcome Chris or Jackie to weigh in. The guidelines on the current model of the pre-screening symptom checklist came from the CDC. And if you look at the items that are on it, it's on a document the CDC put out, I believe, July 16th. I'm not aware that it's changed since that time. I do know that in their work, Chris and Jackie have looked at two other questions with regard to potential exposure, which deal more with traveling out of state or being exposed to someone who has traveled out of state. Chris, Jackie, would you like to weigh in on that?
I will. The guidelines actually were updated on the 3rd of this month, and they include even more symptoms that are somewhat ubiquitous, I guess, including things like swelling or redness of hands or feet, red eyes, eye drainage, rash is now included. So there are a lot of symptoms.
And we're still going to go with the guideline of if somebody else in your household is exhibiting those symptoms, but you are not, if you're a staff member or a student, you're not going to be allowed to enter school?
That's correct.
Rachel Hardison. Will a final schedule be sent home to family as to how our child's week will look with everything broken down for remote learning and in-person learning?
That's a high school-age question. Mr. Clifford is saying yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a final schedule for, I'm sorry, her subject line for that was final schedule for EHS and HCTC. From Marcy Galant. Hello, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of the school leaders for their excellent job in relaying the information tonight. My question is more, is if more parents decide to do only remote learning, which would make the number increase, may that open up options for being able to provide more in-person to those who want it if the social distancing can happen according to numbers?
Yes.
I think you answered that.
Yes.
Yeah, the answer is yes. Can, from Rachel Hardison again, concerning HCTC. Can a student attend in-person learning for HCTC only and remote learn their EHS classes?
So we've had a lot of questions about that. There are a lot of families who are worried about their students being in two different cohorts. So in talking to the high school principals and Mr. Clifford, we're fine with that. And then they would have to honor that through the ranking period, just like we're asking everyone else. If their concern is they don't want cross-contamination, then we would have to honor that through the quarter like we are for others.
Okay.
And if those students are in a maroon or gray group, you know, their days in-person at HCTC would alternate with remote.
Another question from Rachel Hardison. Is the plan being voted on tonight for the full school year, or is this going to be relooked at?
Relooked at.
Okay.
And Rachel, we hope that in relooking at it, that we can get everybody back in school sooner rather than later.
A question from Lindsay Corson. Hola, I am a mother, taxpayer, and a teacher. There is a lot of conflicting research about how children carry transmit the virus. I understand this. Could you please tell the public how many adults will be in the school buildings? Maybe some numbers will help people understand.
We will have, with the exception of staff members who are not able to be in the building because of medical issues, we'll have our full complement of staff in the building. Full number of teachers, full number of ed techs, full number of administrators in all of our buildings.
So for high school, how many adults is that?
Gosh.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight? And the EMS?
We employ 300 and so on. I think it helps to say we employ 300-plus people because you're going to have bus drivers, you're going to have kitchen staff, you're going to have teachers, ed techs.
Substitutes.
All those people. But we employ over 300 people in our schools.
And we will also be abiding by the health and safety guidelines, not just students but staff.
Okay. Question from Kelly Casey. Can we contact families directly and ask them to lock in to either full, hybrid, or remote?
I think the effort that's going to start tomorrow, pending your vote, is to reach out first to the families who selected remote in the non-binding survey to determine if that's what they're going to do. But we've also asked, I just want to go back to the slide. It's late, bear with me. Okay. That's where the calls will start. But we're asking people who, if they did not respond to the survey or the follow-up phone call, please contact the office at your child's school to let us know if you prefer full remote or hybrid by the end of the day Friday. If you opted for in-person learning in the survey and would now prefer remote only, please contact the office by the end of the day Friday. Once we have those numbers, we can determine if we would be able to accommodate more students, potentially with students in a full five-day in-person model.
Can I clarify, Dan? Is that their lock-in date? So when they respond by Friday, that is their lock-in date?
We hope so, Jen. And we talked about that around our table. We want to get this information. As good a job as our staff did making the phone calls, there were some people that they just couldn't reach or couldn't get to get back to them. Yes, we want that to be the drop-dead date for two reasons. One, we want to know, first of all, so we can get the groups assigned. But with a number of the questions that came, Mrs. Casey's, Mrs. Briggs, is there a possibility, if you have enough people choosing remote, to move in a different direction with the in-person? Yes. So yes, I'm going to say the drop-dead date is Friday.
And I will say, we did receive a very thoughtful email from someone in our community that had mentioned if parents had not, hadn't really made their final decision, but if they did have that ability to go full remote, and maybe they were choosing earlier in-person because they, you know, wanted that in-person for their children, but if they do have that opportunity to choose remote, they may consider to do so so that it allows more of our students who really do not have an option to get back into school. I don't know if that will end up happening.
This is the parent who wrote in and said that they chose in-person in the first survey, but because of their family situation, they could support a full remote piece.
Correct. And there may be other families.
If enough of us did that, would that open up spots?
Correct, yeah.
For that particular person, please, if that's the choice that you want to make, please make the phone call to your child's school by the end of the day Friday.
Yeah.
And that will help us move in that direction if we can. Yeah, I thought that was a very good offer.
Question from Crystal Springer. The problem with remote learning is that most students do not have a home environment that is conducive to learning. That is why remote learning failed so miserably in the spring, and no amount of investment in technology by the schools will change that. How do you propose to address that? Furthermore, kids who are not in school will have to be somewhere else, often alone and unsupervised, and that will culminate in more exposure and less safety for them and the community, not more. They and the community would be safer if kids were in school fully.
As I said, our goal is, obviously, we would prefer to have all of our kids back in school. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that right now based on health and safety requirements. And one of the things that we do ask is, it is a challenge for parents, but to try and find a place in the home that can be suitable for the days that it is remote. There are options out there. You know, the Moore Center may be an option. I'm not sure the ages of all of her children. That's an option. We've also heard other parents talk about the fact that there may be parent cohort groups, so to speak, that may be able to connect and provide that supervised space for families.
From Jennifer Haslam. Why are we not starting school remotely with so many questions being asked and no answers for them?
I think the piece is, when we looked at the survey, and it was overwhelming, first time around and the second time around, we have over 80% of our families that want to have their children back in school for a variety of reasons. And the health and safety requirements are there so that we can put proper precautions in place to prevent, using those measures, possibility of transmission. With those pieces in place, we're recommending a hybrid model, not a full remote model. That's something that, you know, if the board wanted to look at that, that's something the board could move in that direction.
From Ashley Pessek. How does each board member who has sat on Zoom for this lengthy meeting feel now that we have reached the end? I don't think we've reached the end, but.
I don't think we're there yet, Ashley.
Again.
Is the end? What?
Again, as we think about synchronous learning, how you feel right now is a good indication of how our students will feel after a full day of Zoom learning.
Well, we are in person today, so.
It's a necessary thing. I did it because I had to. Just like when I was traveling, I had to wear a mask all day, from 5:00 in the morning till, you know, 4:00 in the afternoon. I did it because I had to. Is it ideal? No. Is that what I want? No. But is that what needs to be done to make things work? Yeah.
Mary Dugan. When are sports practices starting for Ellsworth? How will parents know about this? Why hasn't Ellsworth started conditioning when the? There's a little bit garbled here. When something has improved, approved some start already?
A decision made with all the Hancock County schools, but one that. A decision made with all the Hancock County schools, but one that the primary objective right now is to put in place a model to return students to school academically. There was a proposal from the athletic directors in Hancock County to start the conditioning activities on the 24th. Once we get this model in place, that's a conversation that will be revisited. But we are not allowing students in school now, and we're not allowing members of the public in school now. So we are not starting up those activities yet.
Okay. Jasmine Ireland, who will be cleaning classrooms between rotations?
Our custodial staff will be part of that process.
I don't think they would be able to keep up with that. So I'm wondering, are we going to be having teachers doing that between classes? Because they wouldn't be able to be in every room. I'm just thinking of the high school and that consideration. And I know Jasmine is a teacher at the high school, because moving classroom to classroom, now we, you know, we do need to.
As, as.
We can't have that many custodians. It's not going to work.
You, you don't. So are there going to be situations where staff members are going to have to do things they may not have done in previous years? Yes. We're still working through that. I don't know, Mrs. Clifford was going to address that to us.
I was just going to say that we've discussed this in the K-4 leadership, but I know that title staff will see kids, then they'll sanitize the desks, and then they'll see another set of kids.
And title ones, correct.
Yeah. So I know that Chuck has got equipment together. It's a bucket with a paper towel, and it's got the sanitizer in it. You pop it out, you wash the wipe off the desk. There you go. So I know that in speaking for K-4, the teachers are going to sanitize in between seeing students.
Thank you.
A follow-up question from Monica McAndrews, thank you for asking my question previously. I should have been clearer. I meant, question about in Monday, the Monday holidays and the disparity between the Monday, Wednesday group and the Tuesday, Thursday group. I meant in-person days will be different between the gray and maroon groups unless Fridays are manipulated to allow Monday, Wednesday group to have more in-person Fridays.
Yeah.
I believe that in-person classes will be more advantageous to the students than distance learning. The school calendar lists thirty-four Mondays, thirty-eight Tuesdays, thirty-four Wednesdays, thirty-six Thursdays, and thirty-four Fridays. So it looks like the.
And of that.
Tuesday, Thursday group has six additional days of in-person than Monday, Wednesday.
Hopefully, we won't be doing this all year long, so we won't have to worry about the thirty-six and the forty-eight.
We have not had a conversation on manipulating the days. And one of the things about the model that's in front of you tonight is, is trying to provide specific, consistent days for the maroon and gray groups. One of the purposes is for childcare and scheduling. That's certainly something we can look at, but again, logistically, we'd have to look at it. It's a good question.
And then Amy Atherton writes, in the middle school, if the kids are, if the kids have learning zones within their homerooms, how will cleanliness be maintained if they switch classrooms?
The learning zones were K-4, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And will they take, will they take their belongings with them, Erica?
Yeah.
How does that?
They're, in terms of like, science labs and things like that, we want to try to keep the, allow kids to switch so that they can do, still maintain the science labs and things like that. There may be instances where they easily can switch teachers, for example, science and soc, uh, excuse me, social studies and language arts. They may just be able to switch teachers. But they take their stuff with them, and we'd have them sanitized.
In between each class?
Yeah. Yep. And we're, and we're, we're trying to schedule in breaks. I mean, certainly, those logistics are still being worked out in some cases, but there's going to be sanitizers in each classroom. There's going to be hand sanitizers on the wall. We're going to make every effort to sanitize everything that we can possibly sanitize.
From Kathy Cody, what if we have a child with ADHD and a mask shield is going to end up being more of an issue than good? Is there consideration for their needs? They need that structure of school.
And I think that, that goes back to questions that were asked earlier. The latitude we have to say no to a face mask or a face shield does not exist. That's something we're going to have to work on with the families, with the student, and the staff, to figure out an appropriate solution that complies with the health and safety requirements. Anything you want to add to that, Carol?
As I'm listening, and, and I, I think we all share these same concerns for the kids that we're talking about. But as I'm listening, there is no wiggle room, and I'm starting to formulate in my head, what is it that we can do to help kids build up the tolerance to wear the mask? So recently, actually, it was an MDOE webinar last week with the special ed, special services director for the state, referencing that, that a psychologist who works with children who have autism in Portland has found really a lot of surprises with how many kids can learn to tolerate the mask or a face shield. The person was really expecting maybe twenty percent of the kids to be able to do it, and it turned out to be about eighty. So I'm thinking, if someone is in a remote learning circumstance, to me, the first priority is going to be, how do we help you get your child to be able to wear a mask? Because it's not just about attending school, it's about being out in public. It's about socializing and, and learning about social distancing. So there's more to it than just access to school. And while remote learning isn't the perfect structure, especially for, I think someone messaged about it, incoming kindergartner, I think that we can help and help bring those people in. So that's what I would have to say about that to anyone who asks me.
From Seth Emerson, how often will second graders meet with their teachers while remote in the upcoming school year? Daily meetings, live feeds, or Zoom videos, et cetera?
All that information will be sent out when the remote teacher is assigned, and it'll be specific by grade level. My computer's dead, so I can't tell you off the top of my head. I know that there are live sessions and individualized sessions and small group sessions and office hours, but I, I don't remember the times off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
A special ed question. Sorry, I'm trying to, okay. Hello, my name is Mark Foster, and I have several kids with IEPs where they have to leave the classroom for help with subjects like math, reading, language, arts. Are they going to get help with this?
All children with an IEP will still have the same sort of assistance that they received when they were remote learning. They were still being instructed in their IEP goals, and those will not change whether that, that child is in-person or those children are remote learning. Those will still remain the same. I referenced when I spoke earlier that now we'll have an accommodation section in the IEP that will look at what those services will look like as far as time and how they're delivered in the hybrid or the remote option. And we'll also develop a contingency learning plan so that it's very transparent to parents about the, the limits of, of what we can really do in a remote or a hybrid environment. But yes, those, those objectives, those goals and objectives as written on the IEP will absolutely be addressed by the staff.
This is from Suzy Parsons, our child is starting fifth grade. We are wondering if there's an idea of how long the kids, whether completely remote learning or participating during remote days, will have to be on their computer tablets each day.
We don't have those details quite worked out yet, given that the middle school is going to be doing a mix probably of synchronous and asynchronous learning based on developmental needs and, and those things, and whether or not some of those families can log on at specific times. So we'll be working with teachers to figure that out and families as well.
Next question from Alan Smith, if the board should vote on the three-foot distance as discussed, and I feel should happen, how many more students could we get into in-person learning? I assume at that point, it would be back to normal capacity. I think that would help the vote from the survey, the majority who want in-person learning.
I don't know that it would be back to full capacity.
Do you have that number?
I do not have that.
I think that's what Alan is asking.
I do not have that number.
So we, we did not calculate how many people could, how many students could fit at three feet in all the schools?
We started, we started to set our classrooms up in that, but when we looked more closely at the requirements, we determined that that was not going to be the case. So no.
Another question from Suzy Parsons, has there been, on busing, has there been an idea about how to safely bus our kids to school?
Following the health and safety guidelines and the cleaning and disinfecting guidelines that we have.
From Kristin Philbrook, what would happen if a teacher tested positive for COVID? And how long will kindergartens be expected to be logged on when fully remote? There are two questions there.
If we have a, a staff member or a student who tests positive, we would work with the CDC to implement isolation, remove that person from the school, start contact tracing, dispose or destroy any, like we have papers here on our tables, take care and destroy all of those things that are in the vicinity, close down, clean, and disinfect those spaces in the classroom.
And then the other question she had was.
Kindergarten.
Yeah.
Kindergarten.
So again, my laptop's died. We're in the four-hour mark now from the beginning of the meeting. So what would be helpful for parents is that I will post those guidelines for the remote-only learning plan on the website tomorrow. And if they could reference that, that would be great. And if there are any additional questions about that, they can email me directly, and it's aclifford@ellsworthschools.org. I'm sorry that I can't directly answer the question.
From Nikki Robichaud, will you resurvey parents now that we have an idea of restrictions and the number of students that can be accommodated in the building with hybrid learning? How will we know if our child is at school or home via remote? And I hear rumors of start date being changed. Is this true? As an essential worker myself, it's extremely important to be able to plan safely for my child and my profession. Thank you for your hard work trying to keep our children and community safe.
The second question can be answered first. That's pending a board vote on the calendar tonight. There's a proposal to change the start date from September 1st to September 8th. My sense is, I can't speak for the board, but my sense is there's some support for that. With regard to the other question, can you read it again? I want to make sure I understand it, and some of our principals understand it.
Yeah. Will you resurvey parents now that we have an idea of restrictions and the number of students that can be accommodated in the building with hybrid learning? How will we know if our child is at school or home via remote?
The, the first part of that piece is, the phone call tree will start tomorrow to, to get in place the number of students who are going with remote. We've asked families who did not respond to the survey the first time, or the phone call the first time, to please call in and let us know what their preference is. Also, families that may have changed their mind from a hybrid model to all-remote, please call our offices by Friday and let us know. With those numbers in place, we can get the schedules out. And I, I'm not sure I know how to answer, how will we know when our child is in?
Hybrid or remote.
It may be, if she's asking, it may be dependent upon which group her child is in. If your child is in the maroon group, it would be Mondays and Wednesdays in-person, Tuesdays and Thursdays remote. Gray group would be the opposite, and Fridays would alternate. I'm sorry, it's late. It took me a minute to get what she was asking for. Sorry.
That's okay. I don't think there's any other questions here about this topic.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you to all the people who sent questions in. It's, it's really great to know that we have such a caring, concerned community who wants the best for their kids.
Okay, so.
The recommendation you had as a board from the committee was to reopen ESD schools based on the hybrid instructional model presented at this meeting. And I gave a qualifier before that, that there were still details that have to be worked out logistically, food service, busing, transportation, specific questions that parents have asked tonight. But that is the recommendation from the committee.
Raise a motion?
I don't see anything in the.
There's nothing here, that's why.
Yes.
Well, the, the, the recommendation is this, to reopen Ellsworth School Department schools based upon the hybrid instructional model presented at this meeting. So the motion could, the motion could mirror that.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay.
I second that.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes? All those opposed?
Abby, can I just, for, for the record, clarify, was that you, Abby, that said yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So four, one.
All, all those opposed? Okay. Four, one.
I'd just like to make a comment real quick if I could. This isn't to denounce the hard work from everybody that is involved. But I do feel like I have a voice, and that we have a large amount of our community that is still concerned about going hybrid. And I have tried to be that voice from the very beginning. So this isn't, it isn't personal. It isn't personal towards these people who have worked really hard. It's a tough decision for all of us involved, and I don't want to feel like I don't have that voice. I do. And I am here to give it. And that is without any disrespect. And I want to make that very clear at this meeting tonight. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
J two, consideration of teacher nomination.
Yes, as, as, as the board knows, a couple of meetings ago, you authorized the personnel committee to act on your behalf. Item J three is, and J four are one of those. But we have a teacher nomination for you tonight that's being presented to the full board. This is a nomination of Casey Frederick as the EEMS grade K teacher. She was recommended by the building-level hiring committee based upon her prior experiences working in literacy and early, early elementary education, a strong interview, and strong references. She impressed the interview team with her knowledge and background, her student-centered approach, and a philosophy consistent with the ESD mission and vision. Committee believes she'll be a solid beginning teacher, fit with the kindergarten team, and addition to the EEMS faculty. So I am pleased to nominate to you Casey Frederick as kindergarten teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
Make a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination of Casey Frederick as kindergarten teacher at EEMS with a first-year probationary contract for the 2021 school year.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Thank you. Five, oh. Item J three, acknowledgement of personnel committee's action on behalf of the board.
Mr. Mercosian and Mr. Hudson, would you like to take this, or would you like me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. Personnel committee met briefly a week or so ago and considered two positions. One is a nomination for a grade seven teacher at EEMS. That would be Gretchen Blank. Mrs. Blank is being, was recommended by the building-level committee based on her solid background in the sciences, her recent experiences working in math, a strong interview, and solid references. In addition to being matriculated in the METEP program, she has solid knowledge of instruction and assessment, a student-centered approach, and experience using technologies as a teaching and learning tool. Committee believes she'll be a solid beginning teacher in addition to the EEMS faculty and member of the grade 17. And your, your action as a board would be to acknowledge the personnel committee's action on your behalf.
Well, I've just learned I can make a motion.
You can make a motion.
I'm going to move to acknowledge the personnel committee's action on behalf of the board in hiring Gretchen Blank as a seventh-grade teacher and a first-year probationary contract for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
It works. And the next one the committee looked at was an administrator recommendation. It works. And the next one the committee looked at was an administrator recommendation. Ginger Stoneton was approved by the committee on your behalf as the district's new instructional technology director, replacing Mrs. Clifford. So, Mrs. Clifford has been officially done, although we've called her back in to duty a couple of times tonight. Mrs. Stoneton was unanimous selection of the IT Director Screening Selection Advisory Committee based on her years of experience in technology education field, including 11 years as the tech integrator for the Elsworth School Department. In addition to her successful work experience, Mrs. Stoneton has in-depth knowledge of ESD's technology resources, infrastructure, and equipment, and in promoting and supporting the use of technology as a teaching and learning tool. She's respected by the ESD staff and IT department, and the committee believes that she'll make a smooth transition from her current position in the IT department to the director role. So, again, looking for the board to acknowledge the Personnel Committee's action on your behalf in appointing Mrs. Stoneton.
I move to acknowledge the Personnel Committee's action on behalf of the board in appointing Ginger Stoneton as the IT Director with a two-year administrator contract.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
J4, second read and approval of policies.
Abby, Jen, I'm trying to remember which one of you is the chair of this committee.
Abby.
Abby is, Abby, would you like to take this, or would you like me to?
I can't because I don't have that piece of paper in front of me. So, if you could, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yep, I've got it. Back in our previous meeting, the board conducted a first read on the following policies. AC, which is non-discrimination, equal opportunity, affirmative action. ACAa harassment and sexual harassment of students. ACAa-r, student discrimination, harassment, and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures. ACAB, harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. ACABR, employee discrimination, harassment, and Title IX sexual harassment complaint procedures. What you're being asked to do tonight is to approve a second read and adopt the following amended policies as presented and recommended by the policy committee.
Make a motion to approve second read and adopt the following amended policies as presented and recommended by the policy committee as just read by the superintendent.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5, discussion and consideration of request to paint sidewalks. Do we have the possibility of going into an executive session if we need to?
If the board opts to go into executive session, it would be to review guidance that was provided from legal counsel at your last workshop.
Does anyone feel the need?
No.
No.
I am going to ask if there's public comment that goes with that, or do we need to discuss that first, or before the vote?
Can't hear you.
She asked about public comments.
Oh, public comments?
Yeah.
We have, do we have any?
Yeah, about that, yeah.
Okay.
Let me just go back and find them. One comment is from Shannon Curtis. I think we have more pressing issues to discuss that are time-sensitive. As a parent of Elsworth students, I'm asking that the crosswalk agenda be moved to a later date. That was one comment, and then...
I think we're here, and we should just go forward with it.
Well, I think we also already...
I put that motion forward.
Sorry. I just have to find the...
Since that was about four hours ago, we might just want to update the public who might still be watching.
It was four hours and 12 minutes ago, actually.
That I did put a motion to postpone that to October, and it failed 3-2.
Another comment, and she asked not to, the person asked not to use the name, which normally is against our policy, but this parent has a child who is a member of the LGBT community and has been bullied and doesn't want to increase the risk of that. Feels that the, I'll say, I'll read that. It says, "I understand the intent of the rainbow sidewalks, and they are a great idea and the right environment, but my child, who is a student at EEMS, who's also part of the LGBT community, was in tears when he listened to the last meeting regarding the sidewalks. He became very upset and angry because he feels that by putting in these sidewalks, it will actually create the opposite effect for him, that he will be made fun of and bullied worse because of it. He said that it would make him feel uncomfortable in hopes that the school would not put something on their property that would cause him discomfort and fear. He is hopeful that the school would refrain from placing the sidewalks on their property and allow the city to make that decision to place them in other locations where he feels there is less likelihood of peer conflict." And then I have one further comment, because I felt like that comment was worth, could, I forwarded that comment to Mrs. Cutney, who is the faculty advisor for the group that's promoting, that's proposing this. Mrs. Cutney writes, "I find this email to be heartbreaking but not surprising. It illustrates exactly how many kids in the LGBTQ+ community experience trauma for merely being themselves, and how deeply prejudice against them persists. Despite what some may believe or want to believe, this issue is very real in the K through 8 grades, yet ignoring the issue will not make it better. Without adult guidance, kids are left to draw their own uninformed conclusions, and the setting is ripe for bullying. The students in the GSDA have bravely come forth to raise awareness on this issue with the hope that this will decrease bullying, not the reverse. It seems to me that the underlying problem here is not the crosswalk, but the discrimination and harassment troubling this student. We are making a concerted effort to make improvements for the LGBTQ+ community, and the first step is acknowledging exactly what is happening and why. We need to address not only the bullying, but also the prejudice inherent in the actions. With regards to the bullying your son has experienced in the past, we urge you to discuss in detail what is happening with both teachers and administrators. We cannot protect kids and correct the situation without these details. Please work with us so we can make things better for your son. He is not alone. Best, Carrie Cutney." And those are the only comments I've gotten this evening on this, this agenda item. Ready for a motion?
Yep.
I move that whereas the Elsworth School Department is responsible for the management of all school property, including driveways, whereas images or messages displayed on school property are likely to be interpreted as conveying a message on the school department's behalf, and whereas the school department intends to continue to maintain control over the selection of messages to be displayed on school driveways, now therefore, the request by the Elsworth High School Gender Sexuality Diversity Alliance to paint rainbow-colored crosswalks in a manner and for a duration authorized by the superintendent on Elsworth High School and Elsworth Middle School driveways is approved.
I second that motion.
Discussion? I have had a lot of conversations about this with a lot of people, and my first thought, as I said to Dan, was when I hear rainbow, I think Rainbow Connection. So, I immediately looked up Kermit the Frog and the song, and looked at the lyrics, and it talked about acceptance and my, and unconditional love. And my first thought was the message that we sent last year with Rachel's challenge and kindness matters, that in, in my heart, I would be remiss if I did not vote for this, because I think that we're going to be able to continue those messages so that we have a generation who thinks twice about bullying, thinks twice about making fun of other people. And I think it's a great statement to be supportive of this group. So, those are my comments and my reasoning.
I'm really glad that I'm not there in person to see, have you guys see me ugly cry right now, because that's beautiful. You know, a long time ago, in a whole nother place, I was a nanny to two kids that I raised that are transgendered, and I'm real lucky that they're here with us today. I'm glad that in that day and age, that they made it, because the suicide rate is so high. You know, but I had a cousin that didn't make it. And I wonder, if it were today, and they were greeted with respect and dignity, inclusivity, instead of being told that you're wrong and that you shouldn't, shouldn't have equality, maybe my cousin would be here. And maybe, maybe we can start reducing that 70% suicide rate. Maybe this is a big first step. And I'm really proud that Elsworth is willing to take this chance. And I know, I know a lot of positive things are going to come of it. I'm glad to be on this board tonight.
I concur with what Abby and Brenda just said, and would only add that I really appreciate that the two young people who came to our workshop two weeks ago, Rory Burmeister and Ben Snow, and spoke so eloquently in favor of this proposal. And I think it's a great tribute to them that they were able to bring this to our attention, and I'm happy. I plan to support it.
I'd like to make a comment. Of course, it's late, and so sometimes these discussions get a little more difficult as the night rolls on. But I do need to be cognizant of the fact that while we are trying to promote kindness and acceptance, that the voices of those who still are uncomfortable do need to be heard. I personally have, have heard, and this is a very difficult situation for some people to come forward and voice their opinion on this matter, because I have seen in some of the discussions over this, that somebody who is in disagreement with the school board taking this position as wretched. And I think that isn't providing us the inclusiveness that I do believe the GSDA club, alliance, and that club, and the LGBTQ+ community is looking for. But I do believe that unfortunately, this could cause division, more so than if we had a request that came that did not alter school grounds. I do believe that this group, and I will say their presentation was eloquent, it was pointed, it came with the backing. But I would be remiss myself if I didn't recognize the amount of people that I have, have contacted me about the level of uncomfort they would have from this. So, again, it isn't because, you know, I, I don't support it. I do believe in, in reference to that young man's position, there could be some assumptions made on children who, especially at our grade school and elementary school level, that aren't prepared to emotionally handle those things. And while I do believe that we fully have the support in our schools from our mental health counselors and from this group and like others that they're involved with, I do, I do have my concerns that I can't value one's life over another, and I, and I, and I say that with all of the compassion for that community. But I do need to remember that we have students who have, families who have spoken to myself that would be uncomfortable. So, I just needed to make sure the public was aware that both sides really do need to be considered, and it's a, it's a tough call.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Yes.
Yes, Abby?
Abby, yes.
Okay, 4-1. Thank you. Item 6, discussion and consideration of the Elsworth School Department's participation in class action.
Class action lawsuit. This will be similar to the tobacco settlement from many years ago. This is related to opioids. I forwarded to the board on your packets copies of several documents. One would be an attorney representation agreement. One would be some background on the opioid class action lawsuit, and another would be a resolution at which you're being asked to consider this evening. Due to the time in which this was presented to school superintendents across the state, not too long after our last board meeting, we had a webinar and found out that school districts were being asked to become party to this. There were no costs to the district other than the time that may be necessary for staff to provide demographic information. But it would become party to an overall lawsuit under the basis that because of the opioid epidemic, opioid epidemic, excuse me, it's getting late, and related actions of pharmaceutical manufacturers, wholesalers, distributors, and others, it's reasonable to presume that some of the challenges, social, emotional, mental health, and special education costs at school districts across the country and state may have incurred, that districts could be party to some sort of a settlement or recovery. So, again, there's, there's no cost to our district. I was required to sign before July 31st the client agreement, which I have done. I've presented the resolution to you. If the board decides this is something they do not want to go, it's a matter of a phone call tomorrow to Drummond Woodsom to say, "We do not want to participate."
Motion to approve the resolutions presented at this meeting.
I'll second.
Is it Jen?
Rob.
Rob first, then Jen, okay. It's late. I heard a voice.
You're not kidding.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Abby?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion and consideration of amendment to the 2020-2021 Elsworth School Department calendar.
Seems a long time ago that we presented this concept to you, but this is a calendar that would amend the calendar that you approved, I believe, back in February, to change the starting student date from September 1 until September 8, and change the five days that were student days to staff days to support preparation of our staff for the beginning of the school year. No other days would change throughout the remainder of the calendar. Same number of days, and the instructional days have already been waived by the Department of Education, so you're consistent with state law.
Can I ask a question real quick, because I know it was a while ago we discussed this, but that then allows, the other districts that would be involved with HHTC have all done the same?
Well, they've either all done it, or based on my conversations with the superintendents, are going to do it.
Okay, so we won't have those dissimilar dates.
We would be consistent, Jen, that's correct. Yep.
I'll recommend a motion to amend the 2020-2021 Elsworth School Department calendar as presented and recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the last, the last item, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Thomas.
No, go ahead.
You tell, you tell what the item is. That's not my job.
Discussion and consideration of authorization to submit Libra Foundation grant.
And on behalf of Director Sergeant, appreciate the board's willingness to add this item to the agenda this evening, particularly... this item to the agenda this evening, particularly at this late hour. But as you know, Annie has moved her program into a new space at the Mill Mall. We received the favorable arrangements to move into that space. It's a great improvement for her. With the money that we were able to save on the lease agreement in the first year, we're putting it towards making some renovations. This is a grants proposal that came, known to her in the past few days, that requires board authorization to submit it. They don't always do that. Oftentimes, it's board, board acknowledgement of acceptance. Annie needs to do it either by August 15th, or she can't do it again until August 31st. And if she's successful in this, this would certainly support her in doing additional work to her space. So she's provided you with the information?
I move that we authorize the submission of the Libra Foundation grant as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brenda?
And you've got some comments, I think, right?
Well, so unbeknownst, right when the...
I say thank you very much.
I lost my internet connection here at 10...
Thank you, Annie.
Thanks, Annie. The last email I got on my laptop was at 10:28, and it was a couple of minutes later that I said I had no other questions, but apparently I didn't, I didn't know that the connection was gone, so I found those comments on my phone. I can read them now if you want, or...
Yes.
Okay. One is from Ashley Pessek. My question previously was how those sitting on Zoom felt after a lengthy meeting. I appreciate their reply, but would like to be far more clear with the intent of my question. As a parent, I helped seven students, five of which attended Ellsworth Schools, remote learn in our home in the spring. There are no words for how challenging learning inside of a home is. I am clear that you know that remote is not the same as in-person, and I am not pushing for that either. I am, however, expressing grave concerns about hours and hours of synchronous learning at the high school level. Having a variety of learners in our home, we are really clear that, clear most high school students do not have the capacity for that many hours of synchronous learning, and I worry that this sets up students and families and teachers for failure. Was asynchronous learning, where instruction was given during in-person time with project-based learning plus homework for remote days? From the standpoint of a family that did this with a large number of kids, the stress level during the spring was enormous. The only reason we got through it was, we got through it was not synchronous. What we heard repeatedly in the spring was that helping our students get through the socially, this socially and emotionally was the priority. The stress that we are going to add to them with seven hours of remote learning is the direct opposite of that. And then Gwen Clark sent a comment saying, "I agree with more, about more pressing issues, but if we have a rainbow crosswalk, can we have an All Lives Matter one as well?" And then Sue Tripp says, "To the ESD school board and all ESD employees, the children of our community are lucky to have you protecting and educating them. Thank you for caring so much." And then Shannon Curtis, and this is my fault, when her previous question, I didn't complete all of it. She says, "First of all, allow me to extend my gratitude to you all for your hard work. Thank you. There are a million moving parts, and tonight's meeting helped to settle some concerns I had regarding, regarding return to school plans. We are blessed with fantastic administrators in all of our schools. Their leadership should be commended. Our kiddos are so lucky. I'm happy with the soft reopening plan as a starting point to the 2020-2021 school year. With any luck, we can get, we can push through this together as a community and get back to normal as soon as possible." I want, I just wanted to forward my question from tonight's meeting, as it didn't get addressed in its entirety. Again, that was my fault. I asked, I, it was a lengthy question, and I read part of it, the beginning of it, and then we started answering it, and I neglected to read the rest, but... She says, "I'm concerned with the broad scope of symptoms that were previously discussed regarding COVID screening prior to the school day. During last week's discussion," this is about, you know, I read this part. "Daily home screening is specific to a student who has the following: temp of more than 100 point forward when taken by mouth, sore throat, new uncontrolled cough that is associated with difficulty breathing, students with pre-existing chronic allergies or asthma, change in their baseline cough, diarrhea, vomiting, or abdominal pain, new onset of severe headache, especially with fever. Nowhere does it say that student cannot attend school if their family member has these symptoms. We now have clear evidence that COVID-19 symptoms overlap with common illnesses, but it's more likely that a child will actually be ill with something else, this taken from the CDC website. Let's keep in mind that it is very common for young children to have up to eight respiratory illnesses or colds annually. Currently, there are no specific symptoms that will predict whether a child has presumed COVID. Though we are seeing more common symptoms in adults inflicted with Corona, fever is the best indicator. However, the CDC is clear that we continue to follow our schools' previous policies prior to March 2020 regarding illness with fever when they are returning to school. Continuing to follow the fever-free without medication for 24 hours is typical in most schools and should still be followed. So I'm urging you to please revisit this topic prior to the start of school. Many parents have concerns specific to this topic that was touched on last week. I know that the school nurse made comment. Through all my research today, I still cannot find the details of the list as commented. Is it possible for this document to be forwarded? My biggest concern with a list being so long and including family members as a limitation is that families will not be frank. Thanks again for all you do, Shannon Curtis." And, oh, one more here, a short one, from Caitlin Burpee. "Hello, I'm wondering about if the option of using barriers around the desks has been addressed. If children are six feet apart in their learning zones with a barrier cubicle-ish style, why couldn't they take off a mask in their personal space?"
First of all, masks, masks are not to be taken off during the school day. With regard to the barriers, we did look at that. One of the concerns was it's an additional several spaces that need to be cleaned and disinfected. What we are doing, however, with some of the tables that we have in our classrooms, we are installing a plexiglass barrier in the middle of that table, but it does not preclude the use of masks. It's a, it's a welcome suggestion. I had a nice conversation with Mrs. Burpee, but that is why we did not move forward with that.
Item K, calendar and announcements. Meeting schedule, school board workshop Tuesday, August 25, 2020, 6:00 PM. School board meeting Tuesday, September 8, 2020, 6:30 PM. Item I is a German.
That's L.
L.
L. Here's my glasses right here. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, which one of you was it?
I'll make a motion to a drive.
Rob, you headed up.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Thank you.